Good to go.
All right, fantastic. Good evening. Welcome to the January 27, 2021, meeting of the Lawrence Douglas County Planning Commission. My name is David Carter. I'm the Chair of the Commission. And before we begin, I'd like to turn this over to Kyle Kobe, who will give us the rules of engagement for the meeting this evening.
Thank you very much. My name's Kyle Kobe, and I'll be facilitating the Zoom video portion of the meeting. Joining me here in the City Commission Room is Jeff Crick, Playing and Development Services Director. We'll work alongside the Chair, who's on remote video, to facilitate the meeting proceedings. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and public access cable channel 25. During the meeting, please mute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon found in the lower left-hand corner of the Zoom menu next to the video icon. When you are muted, a red line will appear over the icon. This will make it easier for everyone to hear the meeting. Just remember to unmute if and when you want to speak. You can also turn your video camera on or off by clicking the video icon in the menu. For the purposes of this public meeting, when you are not participating in the meeting, please keep your video on. When you are participating in the meeting, please keep your video on. When you are not participating in the meeting, it is okay to turn your video off. You'll still be able to listen to the meeting when your video is off. You'll just have to remember to turn your video back on when you are participating. Turning your video off when you are not participating will help make sure that the active meeting participants can be seen on the screen. In some cases, I may turn someone's video off if they are not actively participating to avoid visual distraction during the meeting. You can always turn your video back on during the meeting. If you are participating by phone, you can enter *6 to mute and unmute your phone. Somewhere on your Zoom screen, excuse me, somewhere on your Zoom screen, you will see a choice to toggle between Speaker and Gallery View. Speaker View shows the active speaker. Gallery View tiles all of the meeting participants. Commissioners, you must state your name and title each time you speak. Members of city staff must also state their name and title each time they speak. I'll also ask that applicants and members of the public identify themselves each time before they speak to ensure that everyone is able to follow along. When public comment is sought on an item, individuals participating via Zoom should use the Raise Your Hand feature. Windows and Mac users can access this feature through the Participants button at the bottom of their screen. Android and iPhone users can access this feature through the More button located at the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. For those calling in by phone, you may dial *9. Individuals will be called upon by name in the order they appear on the meeting host screen. When you are called on, please unmute your listening device and state your name before speaking. The Chair will then call for in-person public comment for those who are physically present. Staff will direct you to the podium to speak while following social distancing and safety protocols. The regular three-minute time limit will apply. All motions will need to be stated clearly. After a motion is made and seconded, staff will call on each Commissioner individually to provide their vote. Staff will then announce whether the motion carried and the count of the vote. I want to again remind everyone to please mute yourself when you're not speaking. I'll now turn the meeting back over to the Chair.
Thank you, Kyle. David Carter, Chair. I'd like to call attention to the minutes in the agenda packet, which Commissioners should have received. And I'd like to ask if anyone has any suggestions for amendments? And otherwise, I'd accept a motion to accept the minutes. Commissioner Ashworth.
Shear Nashworth, Planning Commissioner, I move to accept the minutes.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Commissioner Sinclair, thank you. Jeff, can I ask you to read the role, please?
Really? Jeff. Sorry. You're good. Yes, Jeff Crick, Playing and Development Services Director. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Willey?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. I'd like to ask if there are any reports from any committees that have met over the past month? Seeing none, I will ask Jeff, are there any written communications from the public that are not present in the packet?
All communications, excuse me, Jeff Crick, Playing and Development Services Director. All communications were included in your packet this evening.
Fantastic. How about written communications from staff, other Planning Commissioners, or other Commissioners?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. No additional communications.
Okay, thank you. How about written action of any waiver requests or determinations made by the city engineer?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. None of those this evening.
Okay, thank you. And of Commissioners, I'd like to ask, are there any ex parte communications you'd like to disclose? Commissioner Willey?
Karen Willey, Planning Commissioner. Yes, I have two. On item number one, I was contacted by a near neighbor to item number one, asking for the staff report, which they read and had no difficulties with what was being proposed. Those do happen to be my parents, Roz and Glenn Willey, who live nearby. And also, I had an item, a contact on item number five. I had a very last-minute email that I read just moments before this meeting from Anthony Finello, who's the property owner on item number five. And he and I had met at the property after the last time that this came before the Planning Commission. So he was just expressing that he hoped that it would pass, or that at least the Commission would give him some direction forward for what we'd like to see on that property. It's been a long road. And those are all.
Thank you, Commissioner Willey. David Carter, Chair. Any other ex parte communications? Okay, seeing none. Any declarations of abstentions from specific agenda items? All right. Well, this is the portion of the meeting where we are open for any general public comment on items or any on business that is not on the agenda. Does anyone, let's see, if you have any such items, please raise your hand so that Kyle can recognize you. And Kyle, I can also ask if there's anyone in the Commission chamber.
Kyle Kobe with Planning. I can confirm there is no one in the chamber at this time. So far, I do not see any hands going up in Zoom menu either.
Okay, very good. Then let's go ahead and move on to our regular agenda. Item number one, consider approving a request to rezone approximately 1.26 acres from industrial business park district to multi-dwelling residential office located at 5020, 5030, and 5040 Bob Billings Parkway. And I believe Catherine is going to present on that.
Evening Commissioners. Catherine, we, one of the planners in the planning office. Again, this item before you is a request to rezone from IBP, which is Industrial Business Park, to RMO, which is multi-dwelling residential slash office district. To synopsize, the request is to rezone an area that is designated currently for Industrial Business Park.
And to permit a possible future residential use in the existing buildings. The proposed zoning district that they are proposing is RMO, which accommodates the already developed office uses and provides opportunity for future mix of residential units. This district is intended to accommodate a mixed-use development of low and moderate intensity administrative and professional offices that are compatible with the character of medium-to-high-density residential neighborhoods. The property is located in an existing IBP district and is developed, as I said, with administrative and professional office buildings. There is not a change of use that is currently proposed with this rezoning request. The rezoning is intended to permit the office uses to continue, but introduce the opportunity for, as I said, a mix of residential units. The existing three buildings on the site are currently planned to remain and could potentially be remodeled to accommodate a mix of the office and residential use. In evaluating the request, again, this is a currently developed property. Yes, it is in an industrial district, but it's not in developed currently with industrial uses. It's also situated in this district such that it's surrounded on the northwest and south with adjacent residential zoning. This is, property is located in Tier One growth area of the comprehensive plan, and Tier One prioritizes growth and redevelopment. The applicant sees the rezoning request as a potential to possibly redevelop the property at some point with a mix of uses that would be compatible with the area. Again, the RMO district would continue the uses that are currently developed on this particular parcel. And in conformance with the comprehensive plan to rezone the district, the comprehensive plan also mentions that one of the goals is to retain industrially-zoned property and keep that industrial land inventory. There are some vacant parcels to the northeast and southeast, though any industrial properties that, any industrial proposals could potentially still come into this area with industrial land that is still vacant. If, for instance, this request had maybe been in the center of the industrial district, the context may have been a little different. But because of the location of this particular parcel and evaluating the golden criteria, the situated, being situated surrounded by residential districts, this particular piece of the industrial business park could accommodate and be accommodate the mix of residential uses with the office and administrative professional uses that have developed within this industrial district. The property is not vacant, as I said. It was developed in the early 1990s, and currently, there is not a plan presented with this rezoning or concept to develop it in the immediate future. It's just to add some flexibility to the property. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning, and I would be happy to stand for any questions or clarifications if you should have them.
Thank you, Catherine. David Carter, Chair. I believe the applicant is here. Is Mr. Hamby like to say a few words?
Sure. I think the staff report has kind of summarized it well. I appreciate staff support and working with us on this project. As Catherine mentioned, there's not an immediate plan to do any changes to the buildings. The owner is just trying to prepare for the future. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hamby. David Carter, Chair. At this moment, we can let members of the public speak on this. Again, please use your raise hand function under Participants to let Kyle know that you'd like to speak. And Kyle, can I ask you, is there anybody else in the chamber at this moment?
Kyle Kobe with Planning. There's nobody in the room.
Us right now, and so far, I have not seen any hands go up in the Zoom meeting window.
Okay, thank you. With that, then, I will turn it over to the Commission with any questions for the applicant or for staff.
Karen Willey, Planning Commissioner. So the buildings that are there, nice-looking, kind of stone-looking buildings, pretty substantial. And I, yeah, I believe them when they're saying they're not planning to do anything additional with the buildings other than look at the uses that could be done within them. But what are the potentials with the rezone for what could happen with that property if it were to change owners or if someone were to have a different plan?
I'm assuming that was directed at staff, so I'm going to go ahead and take a swing at that one.
Thank you.
So the density that's permitted in RMO slash, or yeah, RMO office slash history is 22 dwelling units per acre. As I said, the office-type uses are still permitted, so similar administrative and professional uses could go in there in the future if they were to redevelop. Also, dwelling, a multifamily dwelling unit that met that density could also go in there. So the potential is for multifamily housing and/or a mix of housing and/or continued use of office and administrative professional buildings. The uses that would not be able to be continued are the more industrial nature uses that are in the industrial business park permitted use, like manufacturing or something along those lines. So that would be the potential for the property.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. David Carter, Chair. Any other questions? Commissioner Sinclair?
Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. Catherine, one other short, I think, quick question. How would the parking change, if at all, the parking needs and requirements change if they were to put living quarters or whatever on the ground floor or wherever it would be?
So each type of residential living configuration has different parking requirements. If, for instance, they put a work-liv unit in the building so that your office and your living quarters is a connected space, I believe the parking requirement is one. In that instance, it wouldn't be a whole lot of change. If they were to redevelop the property with, in the future, with more of a multifamily-oriented development, I believe those parking calculations are approximately one to one bedroom, depending on the type of use. Of course, with any redevelopment, there would be site planning involved, and any proposed use would have to meet the parking requirement. So sometimes lots are not large enough to accommodate the amount of parking that would be required, and in that instance, it would dictate the density that could go on the property if they were not able to accommodate the parking. There is that site planning element that would come into play where the parking could increase, but the property has to be able to support the parking for the proposed development. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Catherine. David Carter, Chair. Other questions? Commissioner Carpenter?
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. I guess this is, these questions are all going to be directed towards you, Catherine. Monday night, when we had our study session, we went over the lifespan of a zoning application, and one thing that we paused and had quite a few comments or questions about was notice. This is a zoning change, so this requires publication, mailing, and a posted sign. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So the staff report never lists these if the notice has been completed or not, and I think that would be helpful. But in this case, I just want to start by saying I have really no opposition to this zoning change. I think it probably meets all the criteria, but I want to examine the notice on this a little bit. So Catherine, this was published in a newspaper along with the rest of the agenda. Is that correct?
My knowledge, yes. I didn't actually read the newspaper, so I can't confirm that personally, but yes, are.
Yeah, I don't think many people read the legal notices in the paper, especially since they're hard to find online anymore. But that's a responsibility of the city, correct?
That's correct.
And what about the mailing requirement? Was that fulfilled in this case?
To my knowledge, yes. So typically, the applicant provides that radius, so the property ownership list, and then staff sends out the letters on that mailing list. That's certified by the county.
And that's the 400-foot radius notice area, correct?
Yeah.
And the third item is the yellow sign. Was the yellow sign prepared by staff, and was that picked up by the applicant?
Yes. Denny might be able to answer whether it was picked up. So our administrative staff prepares that sign, and those notice letters go out and notifies the applicant to come and pick them up.
Kyle Kobe with Planning. Denny is in the room with us and has confirmed that that sign, that did occur.
Okay. Sunday, when I went out to the property, and again, when I drove by today, there was no sign visible on Bob Billings Parkway. And looking at the posted notice requirements in the Development Code, which is 201301, oh, this gets complicated, doesn't it? For subsection VI. So on these, that sign is supposed to be picked up and placed on the property at least 20 days prior to this meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, that notice window is 20 days, yeah.
All right. And then no later than seven days prior to the meeting, the applicant is supposed to submit a sworn affidavit that that sign was in place, correct?
I do believe that is a requirement, yes.
Did the staff receive a sworn affidavit that the sign was up?
I don't know if that affidavit is in the file. I would have to check.
Jeff Crick, Playing and Development Services Director. We did receive that affidavit. We have it in the file.
Okay.
Also, there's a requirement that the applicant make sure that the sign remains visible for the entire 20 days prior to this meeting. Is that correct?
Jeff Crick, Playing and Development Services Director. That is correct.
So again, I say I was out there twice, Sunday and today, and there was no sign. So I guess this is a question to Jeff Crick. What is the remedy for failing to follow all the requirements of the posted notice?
Jeff Crick, Playing and Development Services Director. There are times where, either due to weather or other actors, sometimes those signs do go missing. Typically, people will let us know, and we'll provide another sign and get it out there as fast as possible. In the instances where the sign is not put in place, then the project is seen to not meet the qualifications for public notice, and we would have to take a look at the procedure for that one.
Well, looking at the code, it says that the direct, planning director shall render the application incomplete and subject it to removal from the agenda on the hearing date, but that's at the Planning Commission's discretion. So I'm just bringing this one up because I think this is one we're all going to agree is okay. And we also have an applicant that says that there's no time pressure on this. So I thought it was a good one to point out that we actually never know exactly what, how the notice was completed or not, and because it's never in the staff report, in this case, we have nobody that's shown up to say they didn't get notice. And so I'm just, want to raise that as an issue, and I think that we need to address whether we are going to appear this today because there's no sign. Even though the applicant says there was a sign, I haven't seen the sign. So I don't have a problem with going forward on this, but I think we need to be careful in the future to make sure that these signs are in the correct place and are there for the required period of time, because we don't know, especially when there might be somebody that wants to weigh in on this that didn't get notice. And those are the yellow signs. Those stand out so much that, I mean, are hard to miss. So I don't know, Mr. Chair, how you want to proceed with this one, but I think we should at least decide whether we're going to go forward with it tonight or defer it to next time, or say we're okay this time, but vote on it. I don't know. Some are interested in what others have to say.
That's a great, thank you for that observation, Commissioner Carpenter. David Carter, Chair. I guess I'd like to call attention to the code, or at least the requirements that you read. I understand you said at the Planning Commission's discretion. So with that, I guess I'll turn that back over to other Commissioners for some discussion. You know, I would state personally, you know, I have been prepared to approve this. I don't see any particular objection. As Catherine raised in her presentation, you know, this is in keeping with the surrounding land uses. It's not in the middle of an industrial development. But I think it's, under the observations that you've raised, it would be critical to get some points of view from other Commissioners. Commissioner Ashworth?
Shear Nashworth, Planning Commissioner. I'd like to direct a question to Mr. Hamby to ask about the sign situation, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is David Hamby with BG Consultants. So when I placed the signs, I was the one that actually picked up the sign and placed it. I actually take a picture of it to show it, to show the sign was placed. And so I have that picture and can furnish that to you. Now, since then, we've had obviously some weather, some high winds, and I was unaware that it had gone missing. If I am aware, then I will go grab another sign from Denny and get it placed, but I wasn't informed that it was missing. So I apologize for that, but like I said, it was placed. I signed the affidavit with a notarized witness, and so if you want that picture, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to furnish it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamby. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Ashworth, do you have any follow-up questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Willey?
So I can attest, at least that the written notification did come out weeks ago, because my folks got a letter and started asking me about it, and I directed them to either call Catherine, or they had to wait until the staff report came out, which I think is what they did. And that, at least that the neighborhood immediately to the south across Bob Billings, there was a fair amount of neighborhood chatter as neighbors shared that information amongst each other. So I think certainly that part of the, at least that neighborhood, I think, was reasonably informed. That doesn't speak to the sign, but at least it speaks to one portion of what Commissioner Carpenter was talking about.
Thank you, Commissioner Willey. David Carter, Chair. Other questions, observations? Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any response to the observation that, from Commissioner Willey?
Well, I'm glad to hear that. The signs aren't so much for the mailed notice area. They're for others that might be in the general area that feel that, to inform them of a potential change so that they can weigh in. And I guess the best example would be if it was on the periphery or in between a couple of established neighborhoods. A notice goes out 400 feet in all directions, but those are issues that can have concerns for the entire neighborhood, and that's the purpose of the sign, to raise awareness. And this one, I have no doubt that Mr. Hamby did exactly what he said he did. I think it would be helpful if our staff reports would kind of go through just what these criteria are, because as the attorneys on this commission know, the first thing is, when we go into a courtroom, the first thing is, was there proper notice? And if not, we can't proceed. The wiggle room that's given in the Development Code for Planning Commission discretion on this is a little bit odd. That kind of depends on the line of inquiry of the current Planning Commission and, you know, how we view everything. And in this case, I don't have a problem in going forward, but I just want to raise that, you know, we might have times that these requirements haven't been met, and it'd be good if we could know ahead of time in a report if, just going down the checklist and everything's been done the proper way. Because I think maybe we can get to the point that we have fewer of those incidents when we have neighbors or even a whole group of people come in and say that we never knew this was happening, and that we can go through and say, hey, no, here's the list, this is the date these things happened, here's a copy of the affidavit, here's a photograph of the sign in front of the location. I think that's a great thing that Mr. Hamby did. So I, you know, this one seemed a safe one to go through because there's not much pressure on it, but, and it's, obviously, it meets all the criteria, the golden factors for the zoning change in this. I thought this was a good one to use, just so we were all kind of on the same page. And I think we should talk about this discretion to the Planning Commission and how we do that, maybe at a study session. Just if we have discretion to go outside the norm of what the code says, I think we should kind of maybe develop some procedure or thought processes that we follow to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. David Carter, Chair. In light of your last observation there, I might just ask back
In light of your last observation there, I might just ask Becky to take down that note, forgive me, Commissioner Shanklin, I'll call on you in just a sec. Since we do have an orientation coming up where one of the topics, I believe, are when things go well and when things, you know, could be improved. So Becky, you know, I know we're going to have limited time in that session, but perhaps if you could put that down for our upcoming discussion. Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin, please. Oh, we're not hearing you, I'm sorry, still see it was mute. There we go.
Okay, I believe I'm unmuted now. Is it possible that Mr. Larkin could give us an opinion on the standard for the exercise of discretion under circumstances like this?
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. You know, the notices requirement, so that people have an opportunity to respond. Here, what we have the situation is, we have an affidavit that the sign was there. We have a statement and an affidavit that it was placed. Apparently, it was it disappeared at some point in time. And, you know, that's kind of where the discretion fits in, you know, was the sign placed? Did they meet the requirements they wanted to? You know, you can't be out there and gauge it, or judge it, or, you know, watch it for 24 hours a day for 20 days. Was the spirit and intent of the code met with the notice? And I think that's where the discretion of the Planning Commission fits in here. You know, you could say, well, if it was never placed, well, that's one thing. But if it was placed and it ended up disappearing because of weather, or because of theft, or vandalism, or some other reason, and it wasn't discovered until later, you know, I think that's where that fits in.
Thank you, Randy, David Carter, Chair, Commissioner Shanklin, any follow-up questions for Mr. Larkin? Okay. Do I have any other questions or observations from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, if I may, Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, I did want to share that before an application reaches you, we do go through
requirements have been met, so by the time it reaches you, we know it has reached that point along the line. There are a number of instances I can think of where an application did not meet those noticing requirements, and we did not put it on your agenda for your consideration. That's just standard policy that we do in the office. If it has not been met for those noticing requirements and meets that code standard, then we don't typically place it on your agenda for you to hear it. So didn't want the commission to know that we do take that extremely seriously, and we do watch that for all of the applications that come before you.
Thank you, Jeff, David Carter, Chair, so basically there is the implicit understanding that all of those conditions have been met. Thank you. Any other questions, observations, or actions from the commission? Commissioner Ashworth?
Commissioner Ashworth, Planning Commissioner, would be ready to put forward a motion at this point.
Exercising, thank you, Commissioner Ashworth, David Carter, Chair, exercising my discretion, I would be willing to accept that. Do I have a second?
Well, I'm
Oh, forgive me, forgive me, you need to make it first.
Make the motion.
Hello. One more time, let's go back, rewind, Commissioner Ashworth, please.
I move that we, the Planning Commission recommend approval of the request to rezone approximately 1.26 acres from IBP District to RMO District, based on the findings presented in the staff report and forwarding it to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth, David Carter, Chair, do I have a second? Commissioner Struckoff? Any further discussion before we go to the vote?
Okay, thank you, Jeff, could I ask you to read the rule, please?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Jeff, David Carter, Chair. That brings us to item two, which has two components, two A and two B. Two A is to consider approving a comprehensive plan amendment for, to Plan 2040, Chapter Eight, to modify the HOP district plan to expand commercial land uses north of West Sixth Street. Two B is to consider approving a request to rezone approximately 0.54 acres from multi-dwelling residential to commercial strip district at 508 Minnesota Street. And I believe Sandy is here to report on that, or to give the presentation. And Sandy, could you just clarify as part of your presentation, how you'd like us to proceed in terms of our specific actions?
Happy to, Sandy Day, planning staff. There are two related items to this development application, the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning. I will do my presentation covering kind of both of those applications in my presentation to you. Your motions, there will actually be three motions you are going to be asked to consider. One is going to be for the comprehensive plan amendment. If the amendment is approved, then you also have a Planning Commission resolution, which is part of that process related to the comprehensive plan. And then a third motion would be for the rezoning, the request to rezone the property from residential to commercial. Does that answer your first part, the first part of your question?
Yes, it does, thank you, Sandy, just to confirm, so we'll have two motions associated with two A and one associated with two B, is that correct?
Sandy Day Planning, that is correct.
Okay, thank you, David Carter, Chair, please proceed.
Thank you. So as we've discussed, these are two related items. The subject property is located in what is called the HOP district plan area. And that stands for the Hillcrest, Old West Lawrence, and Pinckney neighborhoods. The plan area includes an area along West Sixth Street, both to the north, so just north of Fifth Street, and then just south of Seventh Street, along the Sixth Street corridor. The subject property itself that is included in that area is currently zoned RM24, and the proposed request is for CS, which is the majority of the zoning along the West Sixth Street corridor. The property itself today is vacant, it was plotted as four residential lots. It was developed between the 1920s and the 1970s with two detached dwellings that have since been demolished. The surrounding land uses include a variety of uses, including detached housing, multifamily, and commercial uses. And you can see those land uses in the zoning staff report. So the HOP plan is unlike most other plans, it does not have a true land use plan component to it. The plan really looked at doing a couple of specific things, and that was to set forward kind of a framework to look at different specific areas of the planned district, and you can see that in Figure Three of the staff report for the CPA. And then it also wanted to really look at some protections to enhance what the plan called the eclectic and historic character of those different neighborhoods, to do some very targeted rezoning, to bring zoning in line with specific land uses, and then to also promote redevelopment of commercial properties along West Sixth Street that is a medical entryway, and to promote the district as a gateway to downtown. So those are really those three main things that that plan intended to do. And then within that plan, it's fairly short document. There is a page in that plan, if you've had a chance to look at it, we also copied a piece of it out into the staff report, it's the very last page of your comprehensive plan amendment that identified specific properties and proposed how they did not align, and that there was an intent to rezone those to something more fitting with their character. But the other thing that the plan did was identify three target areas that also said additional discussion needs to happen for these areas, and that needs to be an engagement with the property owners on what they want to do within those three target areas. And the plan contemplated that there would be some kind of committee or task group that would move forward through these things. And that piece of the plan was really never executed. Plan was approved in 2005, and obviously, we've had adoption of Land Development Code in 2006, and we've had adoption of our other long-range plan documents, Plan 2040, Transportation 2040, Bicycle Plan, there's a number of specific big policy plans that have been adopted since the HOP plan was originally approved. So what we found in the analysis was that the plan is really dated in a lot of ways. This particular project is unique. It is a question of trying to balance the residential protections and retention of housing stock, and also the need to facilitate commercial redevelopment, which are specific policies in both the HOP plan as a general theme, and then also in Plan 2040 to be able to enhance those commercial uses. This particular property is really very constrained in what it can do, it's got an existing development pattern or fabric that surrounds it, so the ability of this property to expand commercially, it's very limited. There's existing development there, there are existing street network that is there that contains this property that business has been in place since 1959. It's gone through some different ownerships, but it is a very strong business along that corridor. So those are some of the changed circumstances that we considered within the comprehensive plan amendment piece. As far as that clear public purpose, one of the other questions of a comprehensive plan amendment is, again, that is about retaining and helping to enhance those commercial corridors and those commercial properties, and allowing them to to redevelop and to stay viable in their locations. We'll let the applicant talk to you a little bit about the specificity and how their use and how they see themselves differently from some of the other similar classified kind of uses that they would be. But again, that clear purpose of really trying to protect and enhance that commercial corridor within some very limited constraints within there. And then the consistency with the long-range policies and plans, as I've mentioned, that language is very clear in Plan 2040. I think if we had been through some other exercises that updated some of these older, some of that language that doesn't exist in it today. One of the other things that both the, I'm sorry, Plan 20 that both the, I'm sorry, Plan 2040, as well as trying to provide compatibility and transition to the surrounding area. And so we do that in a couple of different ways. One is to move through using the zoning tool itself by establishing the different zoning district and the uses within those districts. But there are also other tools that we can use, such as building orientation, landscaping, building setback, to also enhance some of those transitions, and that was a very that staff went through in the zoning analysis in looking at how do we make sure compatibility is there? Fifth Street, as we describe in the staff report, is really kind of that that southern boundary of commercial, I'm sorry, of where we find that transition between the commercial uses along Sixth and moving up to the lower-density residential uses further to the north in the neighborhood, as we're talking about the Pinckney neighborhood within that district plan. So that was a balanced assessment that we looked at for the rezoning, and the conclusion of that was that we don't have, in this particular application, we don't have specific housing top stock to protect. It's vacant property, those houses, I think, might have been a bit in decline for a while, but they certainly were demolished. The applicant got the appropriate building permits last year to do that, looking at opportunities to retain their business in that location and that commercial land use along the Sixth Street corridor. One of the other things as far as this project may be able to facilitate is looking at some public improvements along Minnesota Street, looking at an enhanced public sidewalk access along that along that street as this property redevelops, the expectation of redevelopment with this project would be that
I know the neighborhood pretty well, I think most of that time I did not have a car, so I walked there. But if I remember right, I don't know that there is any employee parking currently, I think it might be on-street parking. RJ, could you address that, because I know that this site plan or propose, potential plan that we see later in the packet here has some employee parking.
Yeah, sure, hi Karen, nice to see you. We do currently have parking on-site. To my knowledge, I don't think that's considered street parking, David might know better than I do, but we do have an area for employee parking now, that the preliminary drawing that you've seen there is The preliminary drawing that you've seen there is very rough because we weren't sure if we were going to, if we would have the entire property to work with or if we would have, you know, some form of shorted area to work with. So that's very rough. And but obviously, the employee parking along with customer parking that we have now is definitely a concern. But we don't have anything in stone just because, like I said, we're trying to figure out what we were going to have to work with. And we would obviously propose that on any future plan that we site plan that we would turn in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. David Carter, Chair. Any other questions from commissioners?
Commissioner Shanklin, referring to that concept plan again, it shows a possible building location. And I was wondering if we could get the applicant to describe what kind of use that's going to be? Because we're going to a commercial strip designation, but if it's a continuation of the logistics and distribution yard that they currently have, it's it's pretty much just storage that we're looking at. So I was wondering if you could speak to that.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. Basically, like I said, the concept plan is strictly that, just the concept. But a lot of the stuff we have now, I mean, says as storage, not so much storage as to keep the lumber out of the elements. Not, I guess, just not like an overflow storage. So we would have all the product that we currently have, we're trying to keep more on-site. I mean, as we turn through it quicker, it's 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 hard to keep it coming in. So we're just basically extending exactly what we currently have now, just giving us more area to do so. If that hopefully answers your question.
It does, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin, Mr. Brown, David Carter, Chair. Other questions from the commission? I guess I have a question for the, for Mr. Brown. The, and I'm not sure if you were responsible for, you know, filing and executing these demolitions in 2019, but I'm curious if you could speak to, you know, the condition of these of these buildings prior to demolition, a little bit about, you know, why they would have been demolished? Do you have any information on that?
Absolutely. We we purchased the property 508 and 512, Minnesota at that time. I'm not sure what year that was, but we got them. The one to the south, which I, I'm not, I would guess would be 512, hadn't been lived in in quite a while, foundation issues, it sat so long, the water was leaking. I mean, it was, it was not beneficial to remodel, restore. They're just, I mean, the cost was, I mean, basically be starting brand new. That that area currently, the rent return would not be that high. But the main reason was just we were having some issues with them being abandoned, people coming inside. Like I said, damage, just years and years of neglect and just didn't see beneficial, any benefits to remodeling those back to a new condition.
Very good, thank you. David Carter, Chair, any further questions? Commissioner Ashworth.
Sharon Ashworth, Planning Commission, just an observation that here we have a commercial development adjacent to some residential property and we don't have anybody commenting, being concerned about this particular development. So I just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth, the David Carter, Chair. I'll comment on it. I'll confess that, you know, from the standpoint of commercial strip expanding, you know, penetrating into a residential area, it causes me a bit of concern. That's one of the reasons I asked about the residential, the condition of the residential properties. You know, the, all of the photographic and, you know, area imagery that we've got, you know, shows these structures, the the street view of the, you know, bungalow that would have been 512, you know, seemed like kind of a shame to see this structure that was probably about 100 years old to be lost. And it's, you know, it's it's helpful to hear Mr. Brown's account of of the condition, you know, prior to demolition. One thing I did want to call attention to is there is another property, I guess it's West Side Automotive Center at Fifth and Michigan, which is a commercial property, you know, adjacent to to the residential area, not quite that same scale, but that was something I was also curious about. Commissioner Willie, I think you were going to say something, or asking to say.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner, I have a few things, but I'll start with this one. Sandy, it's a question for you. It seems like we've had some other properties along North Sixth Street where we've looked at something commercial that is just a little bit offset of Sixth Street itself. I think maybe north of what was Anderson Rentals and then there was a landscape, a business that was just a few properties north. It seems like we've been down this road before and have been comfortable with expanding our commercials area a little bit to the north. Can you talk about that?
Sandy Day, Planning Office, absolutely. This, and I'll be quite blunt about it. I, and Jeff and Becky will recognize this, that I really kind of struggled back and forth about the the request and the analysis that we were looking at with the project. In your mid-month that you looked at, you looked at that exact property you just described on Monday night, those properties, that is Michigan Street. Michigan Street is a collector's street. It's a direct access up to the hospital. And we have a long history of commercial uses, non-conforming commercial uses in those in those areas. And then, as Chair Carter mentioned, the other property across the street, the automotive use. So there there definitely is this idea that there is in this encroachment going on of commercial uses kind of creeping north of Sixth Street. And I think within the context of the HOP plan, I think we have to, we do look at them very critically and very on a case-by-case analysis. I think Fifth Street is very clearly the line. And then it has residential uses on both north and south side of Fifth Street. One of the things that we discussed with the applicant was perhaps recommending rezoning for the Southern Three lots and leaving the Northern Lot, the RM24. So a reduction in the request of what the applicant was looking at. And that's where I think that that was helpful tool to get from the applicant, kind of a concept plan of what we were talking about because the idea and the importance of having appropriate transition as we're moving through the neighborhood and we're moving up into those lower density parts of the neighborhood. Those were some of the assessment things that we were looking at. To do across the board, commercial zone all the way, you know, from from Sixth Street to Fifth Street, I think that would be a bit difficult to support. But I think looking at these individual properties and how they relate and connect and interact with their surrounding area, we have streets on two sides, we have an alley on another side. It's a fairly narrow, constrained area. And again, it comes back to that balance between supporting existing longstanding businesses and then what to do about that infill residential development. They're small, narrow lots, so we would not get a lot of residential housing out of these lots.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy, David Carter, Chair. Other questions, observations from commissioners? Commissioner Carpenter.
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. This is kind of relying on my memory back to 2005, but I was at multiple meetings informing this plan with the three neighborhoods. They took place at the, in the LMH auditorium off of. So anyhow, one of the bigger concerns in the neighborhoods back then is there were some requests being made to go further into the neighborhoods. And if you look at the plan, I mean, with commercial, if you look at the plan, you'll see that the rough outlines really go from Fifth to Seventh. They wanted to really draw the line that that's that's as far as they go and they wanted to zone to the current use. And this is, you know, slightly different. The other ones we've seen are pretty much, those were the uses that were there, except for the one right behind Anderson Rental, which is a vacant lot that they, I think, we have a group recommended approval for parking for there. But I think that this particular request still meets the ideas expressed by the neighborhood back then in 2004, 2005. And it still kind of holds that line. It is moving up in between. The reason, I think it was high-density residential is because that's what's both to the east and west of this particular property. And it didn't keep it as a single-family residence that were there. It was anticipated by the people that worked on the plan that that would change. And I think the only difference we're doing here is it's going to be to expand the business that I think is valued and has been there for quite a while in one form or another as a lumberyard. So I, this is just me, I wish, I wish some of the people that worked on that plan, like Steve Standing from Pinky or some of the others, were here tonight just to kind of make sure I'm not off-base, but that was a while ago. But I think I would, I would be in favor of this, to maintain the business there. I think it's in the spirit of the plan. And I would agree with Sandy that, you know, these are dividing lines and, you know, to tear down existing high-density residences or other things that are identified in the plan would be probably too far. And we probably would see the Pinky neighborhood here or whatever their name is, we probably get to there. So with that, I just, I'm okay with going forward with this tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter, David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Shanklin, I think you also wanted to say something.
Yeah, I'm following on to Commissioner Ashworth's comment about the proximity to the residential uses. When I raised my concerns before, I was speaking to that aspect, although I didn't point to it directly. I've looked at McCray's facilities in Edwardsville and in Aletha. And I think, you know, first of all, I'm in favor of the proposal. This is more of an urban design comment, I think, than it is an urban planning concept but or concern. But what concerns me is that this type-two buffer yard on the north side of the property is probably not sufficient to really bring the the nice storefront that McCray has on Sixth Street around the corner so that it's, you know, it's a pleasing urban environment for those existing residences. If it ends up being, you know, a tin-rist storage shed with, you know, the the ten-wheeler flatbeds going in and out all day long, it's more on the order of a light industrial facility than it is a a commercial strip center. And I just, I think we need to attend to the urban design issues here. But I just want to make that point. I don't know when we get the opportunity to, you know, to scrutinize the proposal in that fashion. I guess as Planning Commission, we don't. But but that is my concern. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin, David Carter, Chair. Sandy, would you care to address that 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 observation?
To Sandy Day, Planning Office. I think Commissioner Shanklin has really kind of hit the nail on the head, so to speak. The the use that we're, first of all, we're talking about the zoning, just that broad category of uses that are allowed in that district, which includes construction, sales and service. So the next step for the applicant is some subdivision design work, which you may or may not see components of, and then a site plan, which the Planning Commission would not typically see. What kind of structure they add there, they have the primary building, they have several accessory structures. As we look at it, it's still under that use category. We don't divide the buildings quite in that design aspect that that you just described. We would be looking at the building and the site design for conformance with the commercial design guidelines. Those accessory structures can sometimes be a real challenge to comply with commercial design guidelines. That's a, that's a very big next step that we have to take. A lot of times, we do end up offsetting some of those, to use the term you use, the, you know, the industrial kind of component of the structure itself. We do end up many times offsetting some of that with landscaping, dense landscaping. But we, you know, there there may be other techniques that we can look at with this project as well. So that still remains to be seen. But the site plan component would not be something that would come back to the Planning Commission. What you're talking about would be perhaps a broader discussion about the commercial design guidelines at some point in the future.
Thank you, Sandy, David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Shanklin, does that address your immediate questions or observations? Okay, very good, thanks. So I'm going to turn it back over to the commission. Any further questions, observations, or possibly motions? Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner, I wanted to kind of come back to that idea of a community commercial that was brought up by by Sandy in the report and just make a mention that, you know, businesses like this, they're they're kind of hard to fit anywhere. And if if you can't expand in the current location, then you have to look to, you know, the the edge of the community and that becomes tricky in all the ways that we've talked about. And, you know, we try for infill and we try for neighborhood commercial. And just in the time that I've been associated with Lawrence, the 20-some years that I've been here, we've lost at least three lumberyards that I can think of and gained instead these big-box stores that sell some of the same products but not with the same kind of customer service. So as a contractor's supply, I think this might be the only one of this scale. And I would be, of course, in in favor of allowing the expansion with the the things we have items before we us tonight. But I just want to make sure that we, you know, we're aware of 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 how hard it is for these businesses to exist in Lawrence and and to give us, give us a chance to allow this one to expand. So I'm in favor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie, David Carter, Chair. I'm glad you brought that up because I I'd like to also call attention just kind of the the neighborhood health aspect of this. You know, clearly, you know, as Commissioner Shanklin said, there's this, there's a strong urban design and kind of interaction of of adjacent uses aspect. I think there's also a longer-term development aspect in terms of how this business is integrated with the neighborhood and if it, you know, to find itself lured to relocate somewhere else, there's the question of what replaces it, both economically and in terms of the site. So I think that's one other reason that I'm inclined to be in favor of this. With that, any other observations, questions, or perhaps motions from commissioners? I'm a fan of uncomfortable silences. Commissioner Willie.
Actually, if Commissioner Sinclair wants to do it, you can go for it.
Commissioner Sinclair, would you care to speak or make a motion?
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner, I was going to offer to make a motion on the comp plan amendment. I move that we forward a recommendation of approval of the comprehensive plan amendment to Plan 2040 to the Lawrence City Commission and the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to amend Chapter Eight and the HOP District Plan. to amend Chapter Eight and the HOP District Plan to expand commercial land use north of West Sixth Street, consistent with what's set forth in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. David Carter, Chair. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ashworth, any further discussion before we vote? Okay, Jeff, can I ask you to call the roll, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payden?
Yes.
Commissioner Shankland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Then I believe the next step, we need a motion on the, let's see if I get this right, the resolution. And Sandy, you said there was, I think I see page 111 or 86 of the staff report, 111 of the packet. Is that correct?
Sandy Day Planning Office, I think so.
And could you, I'm going to ask you, could you help us understand a little bit what a motion would, would look like? Are we, because I think you said some wording, but would, and maybe someone else can offer some wisdom here. Whether we, I'm sorry?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. Commissioner, are you referring to the Planning Commission Resolution Authorization?
I am.
In that instance, you could, the motion could be to approve and authorize the Chair and Vice Chair to sign the resolution as attached.
Perfect. Would anyone care to make that motion? Commissioner Willie? Thank you. David Carter, Chair, do I have a second? Commissioner Carpenter, thank you. And any further discussion before a vote? Okay, Jeff, could I ask you to call the roll, please?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payden?
Yes.
Commissioner Shankland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair? Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. This brings us to item two B. We need a motion on the actual rezoning. Anyone care to make that? Commissioner Ashworth?
Chair Ashworth, Planning Commissioner. I move that we recommend approval of the request to rezone approximately 0.54 acres from RM24 District to CS District based on the findings presented in the staff report and forwarding it to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. Do I have a second? Commissioner Struckoff, thank you. Any further discussion before we go to a vote? Okay, Jeff, can I ask you to call the roll, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payden?
Yes.
Commissioner Shankland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. That brings us to item three.
Mr. Chair?
Forgive me. Was that Commissioner Willie?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. Would you be willing to entertain a short break?
I was going, I was thinking of suggesting that after this item, but before this item is fine. So I would suggest a, is five minutes adequate? How about a five-minute recess? Let us reconvene at 7:50, please.
For which one? Well, computers.
Okay. David Carter, Chair, let's return to item three. Consider a conditional use permit for an equipment storage heavy use located northeast of the intersection of North 1700 Road or North Street and North Second Street.
Catherine, I believe you're going to present on this?
Good evening again, Commissioners. Captain Lee, Planning Office. And so this particular conditional use permit is a request for a renewal. Permit came into effect almost a year ago, and it does expire in March of this year. So the applicant is requesting a renewal for the equipment storage use on the property. The applicant is requesting a three-year renewal. So there's a lot of details in the staff report. I'm going to kind of give a high-level synopsis because not a lot has changed in the last year when this was first approved. A couple of things did change. The county code got rewritten a little bit. So this used to be classified as truck storage. It is now classified as equipment storage heavy. So a little bit of revision in the definition. Doesn't affect really the impact, it's just the way they're labeling the use. Also, the zoning, the county zoning changed a bit. It used to be just A zoning last year when it was approved. The county has rezoned this property to A dash, or A2, which is transitional ag. The requirements for the CUP have not changed. It still requires a CUP in the A2 zoning for equipment storage. So again, as I said, not a lot has changed. The northeast sector plan has not changed. The comprehensive plan has not changed. And most of the contextual issues that were analyzed in the eight golden criteria, which have also not changed. So staff's recommendation has not changed from the last time when we first heard this conditional use permit. And staff is recommending denial because this is a renewal of a CUP that was granted. Staff is also listing some conditions in this, in the recommendation if the Commission opts to recommend approval. So there are some conditions, those would be at a minimum. Obviously, the Commission has the opportunity to modify those if they see fit. So I would be happy to stand for any questions. Again, this is a brief synopsis. There's a lot of details in the staff report, but they are the same details that were in this conditional use permit when you heard it almost a year ago. So again, I'd be happy to have a couple of questions on what is happening on the site. So.
Thank you, Catherine. David Carter, Chair. I believe Ms. Ree and Mr. Polk are both here. Ree, would you care to respond to Catherine's presentation? You've got, between the two of you, 10 minutes.
That sounds good. My name is Joy Ray. I am a landscape architect with Paul Rea Architects, representing this portion of the talk anyway. How do you be septic, but Greg is on here, like you said, if we have questions for him or if he wants to clarify here when I'm done. Catherine kind of gave you the quick synopsis. I have sort of a different one I wanted to bring up. And that was that one year ago, you know, January 22nd, this conditional use permit was approved at the Planning Commission. And then in March finalized at the County Commission. So that brings us to our mixed timeline with the, with the one-year CUP. It makes it difficult. Because in October of this year, then, we had to resubmit the next application to get us on this evening's Planning Commission agenda. So really, we had seven months off between March and when we had to go again in October. So that's one reason we're requesting a little bit longer term for this conditional use permit. One of the other reasons that the County Commission thought it would be a good idea to do one year was just to get an idea of how the site would be used and, you know, noise and what the neighbors thought. I think you can tell from looking at the letters in the packet that pretty much everybody's in favor of continuing the use on the site. I saw the neighbor to the east who was concerned last time about this use, Mr. Wayne Haberkamp, he sent a letter in saying he is okay with the site. And that was the person we were really wanting to make sure was pleased with what was going on out there. So they're happy with the way things are, and that's good news for honeybee to continue this use. Last time around, a lot of the neighbors still applauded, you know, the great cleanup of the site and have really appreciated that. The dilemma still is that, you know, it's in the county. The county doesn't really want the property. The city doesn't necessarily want to annex, so we're still caught in the, in the middle for this piece of property. We, you know, how it should really be used with the people in a zoning district. It is small, it's 1.78 acres, and a lot of the surrounding lots are, are quite a bit bigger and able to do more as far as ag uses go. We do, did last June, get a conditional use permit approved for the property south of town. That was listed in the staff report. The building is going up. Greg can correct me if I'm wrong. But just due to COVID, I think we can all agree, things have slowed down considerably and the projects we thought would go one-way have taken longer and gone different ways. Things just operate slower where we're all on computers versus in-person. So their plan is still to move south of town, but for now, they're just needing more time to be able to get there. So that's why we're, you know, the perfect world, three years would give them plenty of time to finish up their financing and get things, things done. But if that concerns you, we can talk about that as well. So I think that's all I have. But Greg, if you want to add anything, go for it.
No, I think that you've covered everything. I'm glad you brought up Wayne. Wayne was the original person who brought up the protest petition in 2020. And we were grateful that he came forward and brought a letter to the Commission and was happy with everything that happened on the property. And as you discussed, the Commission gave us one year of the CUP, and it did give us time to look for a piece of property. And we bought a 60-acre tract south of town. So we're on track, well, we were on track until COVID hit. It's been devastating financially and personally to a lot of us around here. We know things are going to get better, hopefully this spring. And we'll be back on our new building construction and hopefully be moving in the next year and a half, two years, once we have everything completed. So I think you've covered just about everything so far, Joy.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ray and Mr. Polk. David Carter, Chair, before I take over, I just want to ask Ms. Ray-- was there anything you wanted to follow up, Mr. Polk?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. I do have one person signed up for public comment, but I don't see that person on the meeting. I'll ask, if you are attending by Zoom, please use your, raise your hand function, the participants, and I'll ask Kyle if you see any raised hands or anyone in the chamber signed up to speak at this moment.
Kyle, could we with planning? We do have one individual present here in the room with us to speak on this item.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, I'm Natalia.
I ask you to please state your name. Thank you.
Yeah. Natalia Lauer, and I own property at, at and around 1480 or 1700 Road.
Forgive me, Ms. Lauer, as you get started, I should, forgive me for interrupting. David Carter, Chair, I know you wrote quite a lengthy letter. Just want to remind you, you have three.
Yeah, yeah. I will let my letter speak for itself. I just, there were a couple of things that were brought up just in the last couple of minutes that I wanted to address. One is that it's news to me that Wayne had sent a letter. I did not find that available in the packet, so I have not seen that letter. And I would like to have that letter made available to me. So, and make sure that that is in the public access. I just logged into the packet just now and couldn't find it. The other thing I want to point out is that the applicant has had, thanks to the generosity of the county commission, the applicant has had a year more time to relocate their business than what they would have had if the planning commission's original recommendation had been withheld. So I just think that that should be considered, that the applicant should not have started the business there without the proper permissions in the first place and should have been able to remedy the problem in the great one-year grace period that was very generously given by the county commission to remedy this. I strongly suggest that the planning commission uphold their staff report and deny this permit. To also uphold the Northeast Sector Plan, which, as staff points out, has not changed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lauer, David Carter, Chair. I'll turn back to the applicant. I just want to double-check our bylaws so I get this right. I believe you have, oh, gosh. I'm just going to call a point of order here. Jeff, could I ask you to please remind me how much time the applicant has to respond to public comments? I believe it's five minutes, is that correct?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. Commissioner, you are correct. Petitioner's response is five minutes.
Very good, thank you. So Ms. Ree, if you want to respond to Ms. Lauer's comments and possibly including her, her letter.
As far as the comments go, I just wanted to bring up that the, the planning commission did approve last time around. Catherine can correct me if I'm wrong, but three-year conditional use permit. Well, it was like five, but the planning commission couldn't decide if it should be approved or not approved. So it went to the planning commission with five members agreeing and five disagreeing on the three-year conditional use permit. And at the county commission, that's when they agreed to go to one year. Again, if I'm misspeaking, Catherine, please let me know. But did you have something?
No, I was just going to say, yes, it was five to five. However, a tie vote is basically a failure to recommend.
Okay. But, and that kind of brings me back around to the, to the point I made before where, you know, it's a tricky piece of property. The county kind of wants it to be annexed into the city. The city doesn't necessarily need it or have a desire to take care of it right now. You know, those are all options that we looked at before, which leaves us in this middle ground point of just asking the planning commission to go ahead and, you know, consider this and allowing them to continue operating the business there in good standing while they continue to get their other site ready.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ree, David Carter, Chair. With that, I will turn it over to commissioners for questions to the applicant or to staff. Commissioner Sinclair.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. If I remember correctly, and I could be wrong, I think at the, at the meeting the last time when we saw this, Paul Werner said that a year would be sufficient. So I remember pushing for a year and it, it didn't happen. Ultimately, it did in front of the Board of County Commissioners. But I guess the question I have is if, you know, if I was only understanding a year, that it'd be able to get done in a year. And I understand that COVID has happened since then. But I think, I mean, I still feel pretty strongly that this particular use isn't appropriate for the area, regardless of whether or not the property's been cleaned up. I think that's, you know, I think that's understood. I still have concerns about the use itself. If we're to expand this or extend this another year, I would be curious to know specifically from the applicant, what, I guess, what happened since last January, specifically as a result of COVID, that prevented you from completing the project to the other property so that you couldn't move there? And how that'll change in the next year if the pandemic is going to, you know, run until the end of 2021?
This is Greg Polk, applicant. Some of the things that happened during COVID. It hit us financially. A large percentage of our customers, probably 35% to 40%, decided not to use us at that time. During this time, lucky enough, everyone here still got a paycheck and we didn't have any layoffs. It hit me personally. My mother passed away from COVID here in town. We had trouble getting building supplies. We had trouble getting metal. Things were ordered. Took a much longer than we thought. It took us a while to find the right piece of property. We had to have our property okayed by KDHE, make sure it met our criteria to use it. That took months. Everything has just been backed up longer than we thought it was. We're just asking for this extension. So we, we don't want to be here either. We want to move. We want to go out into this piece of property where we don't have neighbors. The city is located across the street, the city wastewater facility from us. So it took us a while to find a great piece of property. We've worked quite a bit with Tanya, trying to find the right property. We've met all the criteria to stay here. Everything that was requested before. The county zoning has come by and checked us. There's been people that have called us in, said that we were doing things here that we weren't doing. The city has come, the county's come by a couple of times and checked us, and we've not had any violations. One neighbor who has chastised most of the residents on this block is the one that we know has continued to call. She's the one who turned us in in the, in the letter about a light. We were changing a light bulb. And she called the county and told them that we were installing new lights. And so Tina Rakes came by and noticed that we were only putting in light bulbs. So we don't want to be here. We're anxious to go. We've just had some financial and personal setbacks, but we're trying to work through them and move on. I hope that answers some of your questions.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Polk. It does. I just, I'd hate to be here next January or, you know, sometime after that in the same, same situation, I guess. I know last time, you know, things may be different now without hearing the, first the commissioners speak, but last time, we couldn't reach, you know, a majority one way or the other on granting or recommending approval or denial of it. And there were a lot of concerns about it. And so it, I just don't, I don't want to have this sort of small stepping process into the future when it doesn't get done. But I hear your, I, I hear what, what sounds to me like sincerity in trying to get this, get this move to happen. So thank you for responding, Mr. Polk.
Thank you, Mr. Polk and Commissioner Sinclair. David Carter, Chair. Further questions from commissioners? Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. Mr. Polk, the majority of our planning commission are city residents and therefore probably don't use your services like I do. Can you just talk about what, what a septic service is and what it does? And if there are even others available in the county, I don't know of any. So I guess I, I'm kind of highlighting this as an essential business that happens in the county that nobody especially wants as a neighbor, I'm sorry. But I just want that to be a part of the discussion, that we have to find a home for this somewhere. And I think there's a long-term plan in place. But, Mr. Polk, if you could address that.
Certainly. I'm going to let you, Scott, who's the manager, explain to you what happens and how things work. I'll turn to her hand.
And thank you. Scott, could I ask you to state your full name, please?
Scott Helm, partner and manager. Yes, we are an essential business. Not only do we take care of everybody in the county, this county, other counties. We take care of businesses downtown. We take care of car washes, anything and everything that you can put in a VAC truck other than hazardous materials. We don't handle any hazardous waste. But as far as anybody else in the county, we are the only one in the county. So the whole county relies, or 98% of the county relies on us for service. We have a few companies in surrounding cities that may come down here towards county lines, like Franklin County line, but, yeah. Anything and everything that we can do for residents in the county, we take care of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helm and Commissioner Willie, Commissioner Ashworth.
I'm Sharon Ashworth, Planning Commission. I have to admit, in reading through this packet, I was quite torn. I understand that the Northeast Sector Plan does not allow for this activity. I believe I, in the last time this came through, I voted to allow them a year's grace period to go ahead and find a place to move. And I have to say that I'm inclined, given the situation this year, that they appear to be very responsible with this piece of property. They are not planning on being there long-term. A lot of the letters from the neighboring community were very favorable. So I have to say, I guess I'm, you know, I'd like to hear from other commissioners, but I'm somewhat inclined to, to give them a bit more time to move to the other property, because it doesn't sound like this is a long-term and there's no other demanded use for this particular property. Those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth, David Carter, Chair. I'd like to give other commissioners that opportunity. Commissioner Carpenter.
Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. I see Tanya Voight has a screen. If Tanya, I have a question for her. There she is. Hi, Tanya. I'm just curious about the status of this property that we're told you've been working with them on. Does that have all the necessary approvals by the county? Or so this can be completed within the next year? Or is there a possibility it could take more?
So Tanya Voight, zoning director for Douglas County Zoning and Codes. And the conditional use permit in the county, south of town, they have pulled their building permit, I believe, on that property. And Mike Polk, who is also involved, is also in the process of building a home on a portion of that 60 acres. So they are definitely well underway in a positive direction. I think Tina Rakes, she's also on the line and she's the codes director. She could probably comment on kind of how our office operates on, like, the length of a building permit and then how, what the timeframe is for that and then requesting extensions, which, to be honest, during the period of COVID, and Tina can comment on this a little bit more too, building prices have gone up. The supplies, or the demand for supplies have been a problem for a lot of builders and for property owners. And so the Polks are not the only ones that are seeing that challenge. And, and our office does grant extensions. So even if they were close to their building permit expiring, as long as they were making progress and continuing to, to make effort, we would grant an extension. So Tina can probably provide a little bit more information on that realm of it. But yes, they, they've pulled permits and, and they are working towards that resolution.
Thank you, Tanya. Ms. Rakes, would you care to follow up on that?
Tanya did a superb job of highlighting the areas. And Polks have been very good to work with, not only on the current property in question and cleaning up and working with us, but the new projects they have going. And we have been doing inspections. A building permit needs to commence work within 180 days of issuance. And then we need to have activity with every 180 days. And so each time we're out there, they have an extension. Should unforeseen circumstances come up, they exceed that, they can request in writing an extension. And again, with the circumstances of supplies, which is all over the county, people are, are back, back ordered on supplies. We would definitely give them an extension because they have been problematic during the process.
Thank you, Ms. Rakes. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Carpenter, any follow-up questions?
Thank you, Tanya and Tina, that was very helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter and David Carter, Chair. Further questions from commissioners? Commissioner Struckoff.
I, Planning Commissioner Eric Struckoff. I did vote to approve the CUP last year. And when I originally saw this application, I was disinclined because we were told it was going to be done. But I would fall, I would agree with Commissioner Ashworth's statements that as a builder myself now, I understand the pressures that they are facing. And we are facing some of the same ones. And given the statements by our county officials about their progress toward the stated goals which we want them to reach, I am inclined to support this application for one year.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff, David Carter, Chair. I'm glad you asked, you raised the issue of the, of the term of the CUP. Ms. Ree, you very effectively described sort of the timeline of what's involved in a one-year CUP and when you need to make an application for a renewal. I mean, it would seem that, I think you mentioned a seven-month time span from the approval by the county commission and your need to apply for this renewal. You know, so Commissioner Struckoff has brought up the idea of, you know, one-year extension under the conditions that Mr. Polk Under the conditions that Mr. Polk has described, it sounds to me like maybe things wouldn't, you know, really completely get started again within the next seven months. But I also, it also seems to me that three years is, is a pretty excessive timeframe. So I guess I would like to turn back to staff and ask, you know, what are our options here as far as, you know, one, two or three years?
Well, it's recommendations. So I think your options are to set that recommendation for what?
Very good. Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'd like, I'm curious, any, any perspectives from other, other commissioners at this point? Commissioner Carpenter.
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. I was one of the no votes the last time, also. But given what we've all been through this last year, and I understand the pressures on small businesses and how we have a business here that's providing a necessary service that no one else is providing in the county. And believe it or not, Commissioner Willie, I helped my father lay leach lines, pipes back in the late 60s and the 70s. I'm very familiar with septic tanks and what has to happen with those. I am inclined to recommend approval extension for one year, subject to all the conditions that staff has presented here, with the hope that things can get up and going and we won't have to go the whole year. But I would recommend that we approve, review this in a year, just to see where we are. I don't want this just to surround and keep coming back. As Commissioner Struckoff has pointed out, and Commissioner Sinclair pointed out, that, you know, we can't just be doing this over and over again. So my hope is, as things improve here, vaccination rates are going to pick up quickly. And I hope that it's going to free up some of the supply lines and everything else as we go. Now, this can be accomplished in a year. I'm just curious if the applicant has reviewed those conditions and if they have any comments on the conditions that are recommended by staff.
As far as the, the joy ray with power architects, as far as the conditions go, we're fine with those conditions. I guess my concern with the one-year timeframe and just supporting small businesses, we are a small business. And while I'd love to keep taking Honeybee's money at the same time to, you know, have to turn around and submit another application in seven months, that to me, in, in our current economy, is a little bit concerning. Just because prices have gone up, I'd just like to be able to give them, you know, a little bit of time to allow the economy to stabilize, prices to maybe normalize just a little bit. That way they're not, you know, scrambling around trying to buy high-priced items while at the same time trying to pay us more money to turn in another application so we can come back and review it in a year. The two-year timeframe, while it does seem longer, at least it would give us time to help a small business, you know, not have to spend money to pay us to come back here and, and talk to you in a year, just because of the lead time it takes us to get there. In October, you know, we'd be starting this process all over again, which is hard on Honeybee.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any follow-ups?
I would.
Okay, thank you. So David Carter, Chair, I, I would, I, I believe I was one of the no votes last year, given the, the descriptions that have been then presented tonight, I would actually be inclined to recommend a, a two-year term at this point. Of course, everything, anything that we do tonight is a recommendation, which ultimately will be, you know, interpreted and, and, and reworked by the county commission. So whether it's, you know, one year or two years, at some level, I think is, is, it's relevant, but not, not critical. I'm curious at this point if any commissioners would care to speak anymore or if some would care to make a motion. Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. I think the two-year timeframe is more realistic. I think the one-year timeframe would be a push, especially with the time constraint that would, the time that it would take them to prepare the documents just to come back to us takes away from fulfilling the mission of moving to the final location and, and dollars and such. So I think the two-year timeframe, hopefully they won't need it all, is just, everybody's goal is that they don't come back here again for another one, that they settle into their, their permanent home that we've already approved the CUP for that. So two years, sounds good to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Commissioner Sinclair.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. I was opposed to this the first time around and didn't want anything over a year. And it's been a year. And so I just want to say, just briefly, I agree, I think, with Commissioner Carpenter and with Commissioner Willie, I think we ought to do a two-year approval on this. I think a lot has changed over the last 12 months. And, I mean, I've personally been affected by COVID. I understand, having done some house renovations in the timeframe as well, that these things have impacted supply chain and prices. And that's not even taking into account the health and familial impacts that this has had. So I, and I don't, you know, my first inclination was just to give another year, just to be consistent with last, last time, but, you know, in for penny, in for pound. I'd rather the applicant be able to have a, a chance to get it done, a real chance and not have to pay Ms. Ray to come back and get another year. So I, I, I'm in favor of approving it for, with the two-year limit and the conditions that are set out in the staff report as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. Commissioner Struckoff.
I can support a two-year extension. Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff, David Carter, Chair. Would anyone care to make a motion? Commissioner Carpenter.
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. I just have one other item to consider. If we go with the two years, which I believe is going to be in the motion now, is it possible that upon, recommend that the conditional use permit terminate so that this doesn't act as a secondary storage yard perhaps until the end of the two years?
Commissioner Carpenter, David Carter, Chair. I'm not sure if it's my internet connection or yours, but I didn't fully understand your enunciation. Could you repeat, please?
I'm sorry. If we, the two years, wondering is the question to staff, if we could add an additional condition that the, this conditional use permit would terminate upon the move of septic to the new location and not remain open, you know, with non-use or as secondary storage until the end of the two-year term? I'd just like this condition permit to go away as soon as it's no longer absolutely necessary.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter, David Carter, Chair. I just want to clarify, and you can just say yes or no if you wish, but you're, you're saying that even, you know, assuming the move takes place in less than 24 months, at that point, that the, that the CUP terminates, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. With that, any, David Carter, Chair, any other comments or, or motions?
Commissioner Carter, or, was that a question for screen?
That, thank you, thank you, Catherine. Yeah, I think that's, that's worth following up and asking if that is feasible.
My inclination that it is, but I'm actually going to ask Director Jeff Crick to weigh in on whether that condition, as it was worded, would be appropriate.
Jeff Crick, Planning Development Services Director. If I understood Commissioner Carpenter's item correctly, it was that if the southern site was to become occupied, that the relocation from the northern site to the southern site would trigger the expiration of the conditional use. Is that my understanding the, correct?
Correct.
Jeff Crick, Planning Development Services Director. I believe that to be possible. It would probably need to be contingent upon a threshold being achieved. Typically, what you might see is if the southern site was to obtain a full certificate of occupancy, then that could trigger the expiration of the conditional use permit of the northern property. It's, it's a little unique of a, of an item there, but I would, I would recommend if it was to be in the motion, or to be in the recommendation, that it be tied to the southern site achieving its full certificate of occupancy.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Shanklin, you wish to say something?
Mr., just for purposes of drafting a motion here, I'd like to suggest that we do something like the earlier to occur of two years or 30 days following the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, so they have a chance to move in.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin, David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Carpenter, would you care to respond to that idea?
I think that's appropriate. I'm sure if I understood Jeff correctly, is the certificate of occupancy was enough? Or is there some stage that you were referencing, Jeff, as the time frame?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. I was referencing specifically the, the granting of the full certificate of occupancy by Douglas County Zoning and Codes.
And I'd ask that, you know, any motion for the two years include that the staff recommendations and include the land suggested by Commissioner Shanklin about the earlier of two years or the occup-
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter, David Carter, Chair. At this point, any further comments or suggestions for a motion?
Suggestions for a motion? Commissioner Struckoff.
Planning Commissioner Eric Struckoff, I will take a stab at a motion.
Please, go ahead. Thank you, Jeff. That brings us to item number four. Consider a text amendment to the City of Lawrence Land Development Code with the goal of reducing the cost to construct housing by 5% overall. And Kyle, I believe you're presenting on this item.
Thank you very much, Kyle Kobe with Planning. Signing before you this evening is a consideration of a text amendment to several sections of the Land Development Code subdivision regulations, with the goal of helping reduce the cost of housing in the City of Lawrence. Right up front, I just wanted to correct an error in the staff report and the agenda item. There's multiple references to forwarding the recommendation to the city commission. Any motion or motions would need to be made both to the city commission and the county commission. The subdivision regulations are adopted by both of those entities. So I just wanted to correct that right up front. The genesis of this project originated in September of 2016, when the Affordable Housing Advisory Board created the goal of reducing housing costs by 5%. This text amendment was initiated by the city commission in February of 2018. And when the city commission voted to initiate the text amendment, several specific items were noted for examination. Of those items, the ones that pertain to the Land Development Code are the three topics covered in the staff report, those being street tree standards, class studies requirements, specifically traffic impact studies and downstream sanitary sewer analysis, and the sidewalk timing installation requirements. I'm going to eat, get more detail on each of those here shortly, but just a little bit of background before I get there. The Affordable Housing Advisory Board reviewed and discussed a draft staff report at their meeting on May 11th of 2020. The item was deferred at that time to provide more time for additional information and was then heard again on August 10th of 2020. Following the August meeting, the, of the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, Planning and Development Services and Municipal Services and Operations staff revisited the sidewalk installation timing issue. As a result of those discussions, an alternative was identified, the current standards and new language was developed, which is discussed in the staff report. Staff then met with representative of the Lawrence Home Builders Association on several occasions to discuss and refine the proposed changes. As there in the staff report, this is a change from the initial recommendation that was presented to the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. At that time, staff had recommended no changes to that particular code requirement. So the first topic discussed in the staff report is street, contains the street tree standards. The current street tree standards require one tree for every 40 feet of street frontage. The total length of a block face is measured and used to assess the trees required. The proposed modification is to reduce this requirement from one for every 40 feet to one for every 50 feet. For administrative policy A3, street trees are currently priced at $365 per tree. All the cost calculations for street trees in the report use that number when testing all the different alternatives. I also wanted to clarify something from the plat analysis section of the staff report. That's the section with all the tables that begins on page four, page four of the staff report specifically. The figures provided in those tables, in the tables following the master street tree plan table are based on a lot by lot rather than a per-block basis. So where it says total per 40 feet, those numbers are based on applying the standard lot by lot. And then rounded per 40 feet, those numbers are based on rounding those requirements on a lot by lot basis and then adding from there. So this is the reason why the numbers you see in those tables, including the one per 50 requirements, are higher than the ones you see in the master street tree plan table. The per-block assessment produces a lower requirement than the cumulative total when applying that standard on a lot by lot basis. The examples provided in the Cedar Grove subdivision market document and the street tree standard section use a per-block method. So that's where you see some different numbers depending on where you're looking. Change from 40 feet to 50 feet requirement is more visible when compounded multiple times over a longer stretch of frontage. So for example, a series of lots with a frontage of 60 feet would not see a change in its required amount of trees if you're applying it lot by lot, because in those, in that case, two trees would be required for each lot. But if you string several of them together, those remainders add up. And a way to illustrate that would be to imagine 10 lots in a row with 60 feet of frontage each. The number being divided, in this case, 600, would result in 14 required trees with our current standards. Where if you took the cumulative total of street trees applied on a per-lot basis, that requirement would be 20. So the, the financial impact of changing from the one per 40 to one per 50 assessment, as you can see in the staff report, the impact on a per-lot basis appears to be somewhere between $100 and $200. Fluctuates between that range, pretty much with any method that we use to look at that. much with any method that we use to look at that. So when looking at the impact of modified street tree requirement, the cost savings did not seem to outweigh the cumulative loss that would occur through a reduction in tree coverage across the city. Trees provide a range of direct and indirect returns on investment to a community from impacting property values to general quality of life for the residents of the city. This time, it does not appear that the modifications would do much to address the stated goal of reducing housing costs by 5% and may not align with other community values associated with street trees. Moving on to the plat studies section of the report, the second topic covered. This section pertains to both seven step traffic studies and downstream sanitary sewer analysis, which you might hear me saying DSSA from time to time. So if I do that, you know I'm talking about a downstream sanitary sewer analysis. The purpose of the traffic impact study is to evaluate the impact of a proposed development would have on transportation infrastructure and identify if that development would trigger a need for roadway improvements like a traffic signal or turning lane or something along those lines. Traffic impact studies are required for all non-residential new development or redevelopment, redevelopment for all residential developments of 11 or more lots or dwelling units. Development, sorry, just one second. Development projects anticipated to generate 100 or more trips in a peak hour require a full traffic impact study. Using the information from the plat analysis section of the staff report, of the plats examined, only the large multi-lot plats required a traffic impact study. Using those plats that are listed in the staff report in the section with all the tables, assuming a, I'm sorry, just a second, I'm lost in place. Assuming a cost of $750 for the traffic impact study, the estimated average cost per lot across all of the plats is just under $10. Costs may fluctuate, so that's not, you know, a certain figure in all cases. It appears that the financial impact of the traffic impact study is not significant. Further, the requirement can be waived by the city engineer for projects that are determined not to generate sufficient impact to justify the study. Purpose of the downstream sanitary sewer analysis is to impact, evaluate the impact of proposed development would have on wastewater infrastructure. Downstream sanitary sewer analysis is typically required for preliminary plats that generate a significant enough impact on the city's wastewater infrastructure. As with the traffic impact study, a waiver process exists through which the city engineer can waive the requirement for the DSSA. Also, there is an alternative study, the fixture count analysis, which is available that is sometimes used in place of the DSSA. So for smaller scale projects like lot splits, if that requirement is identified, very often, those needs can be met through the fixture count analysis. And a blank version of that fixture count analysis is available as an attachment to the staff report. So it's also, I think, worth mentioning that these studies, when required, are important tools for assessing the impact that development would have on public infrastructure. Removing them or reducing their use may have an adverse impact on the systems they are designed to support. The third topic covered in the staff report pertains to sidewalk installation timing. This is the section that has changed from the recommendation that staff had at the time of the Affordable Housing Advisory Board heard this item. Currently sidewalks are required to be installed concurrently with street or road infrastructure. The concerns were raised regarding damage that occurs to sidewalks as a result of construction on those lots. So the sidewalks go in before the houses are built. And then when the houses are built, equipment, vehicles driving over there can lead to damage in some cases. The proposed changes discussed in the staff report pertain specifically to the timing of sidewalk installation. The intent of those changes to provide flexibility to property owners and developers on when sidewalks must be installed while preserving high quality pedestrian access and connectivity. The main change from the current standards is to allow for projects that only require a major or minor subdivision to defer sidewalk installation up to two years. However, as properties are as properties are developed, sidewalks are still be required prior to final building inspection. By and large, this option is likely to apply mainly just to detached dwelling or other similar uses. Commercial, industrial, and other non-residential development that requires sidewalk installation would be required to complete that as a part of their regular development review processes. Some other notable changes that are outlined in the staff report are the elimination of, we identified a couple of redundant code references in there, and then the cost of sidewalk improvements shall be the responsibility of the property owner at the time of construction. So in conclusion, as discussed in the staff report, each of the proposed changes, both individually and cumulatively, would potentially yield some degree of reduction to the cost to construct detached dwelling structures. However, those cost savings in some cases may not fully align with other community values that they are being weighed against. Based on the analysis presented in the staff report and attachments, staff does not recommend the proposed changes to street tree spacing, traffic impact study, or downstream sanitary sewer analysis requirements. Staff is recommending that planning commission forward the proposed amendment regarding street tree traffic impact study and downstream sanitary sewer analysis requirements to Lawrence City Commission and the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for denial. Staff does recommend that the proposed changes to sidewalk installation timing requirements as adequate controls are in place to ensure that a reduction in quality and quantity of pedestrian infrastructure will not occur. Staff recommends the planning commission forward the proposed amendment regarding the timing requirements for sidewalk installation to the city commission and board of county commissioners with a recommendation for approval. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Kyle. David Carter, Chair. Very comprehensive report. And because we don't have any applicant, we go straight to public comment. We do have one person signed up in advance. I think I see at least one other person. I see Mr., is it Gaches?
Ron Gaches, Affordable Housing Advisory Board.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. If you could please keep your comments to three minutes, I'd appreciate it. Oh, forgive me. Commissioner Willie, will you?
If you have a point of order, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Would the Affordable Housing Advisory Board be considered the applicant in this case, in which case have more time?
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Kyle, or I guess, or Jeff, can you please clarify?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. That is an excellent question, Commissioner. Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe the text amendment was initiated by the city commission. So it might be, they might be the applicant in the whole of this one, but I also think if you wanted to extend the time to the Commissioner Gaches on that item, I think that would be appropriate if the planning commission does agree with that as an option.
Thank you, Jeff. And thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Gaches, I'll just ask you to use your discretion, please. So thank you for joining us. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ron Gaches, member of the City of Lawrence Affordable Housing Advisory Board. I served as chair of Ahab the past two years while much of the discussion about reducing the cost of new housing occurred. I'm representing only myself in these comments. Please note that these code recommendations were each supported by a unanimous 13 to 0 vote of our advisory board. Know also that there are several significant favorable comments about these changes made by Ahab members that are not reflected in the staff memo summarizing our work. For more insight, I encourage you to please watch the video of our August meeting. Access to affordable housing is fundamental to providing all other social services, physical health, mental health, family assistance, job planning. None of these can occur without adequate housing. The city's comprehensive housing, the city's comprehensive housing survey informed our recommendations. We are losing hundreds of affordable housing units each year. Much of our affordable housing is in fact substandard housing that needs repair and improvements. We are falling far short of meeting the need for affordable housing, rental units, and affordable homes to buy. Federal, state, and local housing programs do not subsidize enough new construction to adequately address our affordable housing needs. To adequately address our housing needs, we must find ways to build market-based affordable housing. The recommendations before you have made a few laps through this process, as you noted, Mr. Chairman. Ahab, the city commission, and this body have all seen these materials before in one form or another. As staff has noted, small changes in tree requirements or the timing of sidewalk construction will not make a significant impact to the cost of new homes. But they are all that remains of a much larger list the staff has largely discredited or dismissed through the process. So why am I pushing these initiatives? It's my opinion that if we can't find a better balance of public values and public policy on the little issues impacting the cost of housing, we have no chance of finding consistent consensus on the major issues that could have more substantial impact. We need a comprehensive housing policy. We need to create more buildable lots. We need to encourage density. We need to identify and embrace changes to policy that make new construction of affordable housing policy possible, excuse me. And we need to recognize that home builders, both for profit and not for profit, are our partners, not a hostile force to be regulated and then ignored. So I'm a frustrated former chair of the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, because after four years, all we've got left are the modest proposals before you and a growing consensus that to have any significant impact, we have to work on more substantive changes. Thank you for your consideration, and that's the conclusion of my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Gaches. David Carter, Chair. Let's see. If I could ask other commenters to please, if you can.
Use your raising hand function on your participants' part of Zoom so that Kyle can recognize you.
Kyle Kobe with planning. Bobby Flori has her hand raised. I do not see any others that have raised their hand at this time. And there's no one in the room with us either.
Thank you, Kyle. Forgive me, Ms. Flori. I assume that you were probably going to want to speak, but please go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. The Lawrence Home Builders Association provided a letter that you should have received in your packet. And I just wanted to come tonight and to say that we support staff's recommendation to make the sidewalk installations more flexible. I think in some limited situations, that would be very helpful. So to add flexibility is always very much appreciated. However, as my letter said, I think there's still opportunities to go much further than this, and it would be great to see the planning commission echo the calls of the community to have more affordable housing. The affordable housing that we create in our community cannot all be done with public money. It needs to be done with private sector involved as well. And I know that the private sector would like to participate more in housing. And although it seems, as the staff has, you know, said in some situations, the cost savings is minimal, it's definitely a cumulative situation of regulatory costs that continue to go up with everything else. And that's really something that you have control over on a local basis are some of the local regulatory requirements. So I would like to see the planning commission send a strong message back to the city and the county with the recommendation that we need to go further and taking a look at our development code and finding ways that we can save money and, as Ron said, balance out some of those community, those community priorities. So with that, I'd like to thank staff. I'd like to thank Ron for his time on the Ahab board and for you to hear our comments tonight.
Thanks very much, Ms. Flori. David Carter, Chair. With that, I will turn it over to the commission. Commissioners, for comments, questions. Commissioner Shanklin?
Commissioner Shanklin here. I, in due course this evening, in the next few minutes, I'm sure we'll make a motion and pass something related to these, what I view as nickel and dime measures that will affect housing costs in some small way. But while we have Mr. Gaches and Ms. Flori available to speak to us on this subject, how, you know, cities that are able to improve on affordable housing do two things. They increase density and they provide for some mix of inclusion and incentives. It's just, we know that to be true. What is it that the planning commission and the planning staff can do to make that happen in Lawrence?
Forgive me, Commissioner Shanklin, David Carter, Chair. Are you directing that to both Mr. Gaches and Ms. Flori? Or would you like to start with either one?
I was offering it up to the public speakers, but I also thought that Jeff Crick might address that as well.
Okay. Jeff, would you care to take that?
I'd be happy to. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. And I hope that I hope I won't steal Commissioner Gaches and Bobby's comments. I hope I don't kind of step on your toes. So if I do, I do apologize. You know, I think in many ways, when you look at what we have in the community, what we see in our codes, I don't, I'm not sure those values of affordable housing are necessarily reflected in our codes in the ways that we would necessarily hope it to be. In the discussions that I've had and in the conversations that I've talked to with a lot of people, it, you know, it's, it's very much as Commissioner Gaches noted, is, you know, you have to have options and choices and different levels of kind of building types and typologies and densities and those kinds of things that have to come into those discussions. So, you know, in some ways, you know, I think it's always good to, you know, cast an eye back and look at the codes and ask, you know, are we getting what we anticipate out of our codes and our items? And I think Bobby made a very good comment that we may not be receiving what we think we are getting out of that. So I always think it's good to really look back and see what that is. You know, I would also think is that this really is, to me, kind of a first stepping stone to maybe hopefully more and better changes that we can see in the code that we could work with other partners to figure out. So, you know, to me, this is a good first step, but I've granted it is probably a small step in the grand scheme of things. It's going to be necessary to have a lot larger steps along the way to really meet the goals that we saw from the Affordable Housing Advisory Board's five-year and 10-year goals that they have, and also kind of meet those items and recommendations that we saw in the BBC housing study that the Affordable Housing Advisory Board commissioned a couple of years ago. So I think we got a lot of work to do and a lot of good potential to kind of go forward on those things. So I think this is, again, a small first step, but I think a good first step in the right direction. So I apologize to the other, if I stole your comments or thunder there. I do apologize if that was the case.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. I'd like to invite either Mr. Gaches or Ms. Flori to follow up on Commissioner Shanklin's question.
Well, if I may, I'll jump in. I think those are good observations. As I said, again, that it's the accumulated nature of these regulations. So while it does seem nickel and dime, and I agree, I mean, we were really surprised. We did a full review of all the development and building codes, and that what you're seeing tonight is just siphoned down to just a few. But when we did a full review, we were really kind of surprised. We didn't expect it to be so incremental, but we think, we called it death by 1,000 cuts. That was our theme to what happened when we looked at all the incremental costs. But I think one of the key factors in how we can get more affordable housing is also related to the lot inventory, the supply available to people. And I think that's something as a community and as appointed and elected officials, you have, you have authority to help is to increase, to make development where we can increase our lot supply. We had a national, the National Association of Home Builders came to your meeting during Plan 2040, and he said the way you- Plan 2040, and he said, the way you get, build more affordable houses is to build more houses. And, you know, back to what Jeff mentioned too, it's about more options. And that increasing that supply of housing does help the supply and demand. Simple economics helps it go down. But anything that we can do to reduce the unnecessary regulation is helpful. It's cumulative, but it's helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Flori. David Carter, Chair. Mr. Gaitius, would you like to follow up on that?
Yes, Ron Gaitius, Affordable Housing Advisory Board member. You've already done some things that have been quite helpful in the area of density. Authorizing two units on a lot, which we've done in the past year, I think will have some good impact over time. There's current discussion about expanding opportunities for accessory dwelling units that I think also can have an impact over time. We really have to come to grips with, as a community, with the most important density initiative of them all, which is to go vertical. If you really want to increase your density and make more efficient your infrastructure investments, you have to go up. You have to increase your density. It's as simple as that. And that will take policy support from advisory panels such as this. When we start looking at inclusion issues, you know, one of the real challenges for the Affordable Housing Advisory Board is commissioners and other community spokespersons have been beating on us to share the wealth of affordable housing throughout the entire community instead of focusing it on just two or three relatively small neighborhoods. I wish I had an opportunity to do that. But in all the time that we've been, we've been working with the trust fund dollars, we've had a single, I say, one solitary proposal of any significance west of Iowa Street. And the reason is because of cost. Land is, the land cost, I'm told, I'm not an investor in this field, and I'm not, certainly not a developer, but I'm told, and staff has convinced me of this, by showing how incrementally small these other changes are. The cost of land is the biggest differential between us and other surrounding communities. Why are our lots more expensive? Because we don't have enough to satisfy demand. Our comprehensive housing study just completed, what, two and a half, three years ago, told us overwhelmingly, we are losing hundreds of affordable housing units each year. Where are they going? They're still there, but they no longer cost what they used to cost to rent per month. Landlords are increasing rents on the same old spots that used to be affordable housing. They're no longer affordable. Our hourly employees can no longer afford to live in these units without being housing burdened. So we've got to come to grips on, do we want to deal with the macroeconomic issues that impact housing costs in our community? And if we do, we have to look at the inventory of buildable lots, and we don't have much. You know, you're the Planning Commission. Can anybody tell me, how many lots did we build on last year? And how many lots, new lots, did we create? I don't have any idea. I don't know if the city has any idea. Somebody should have an idea in order for us to plan and chart policy properly. If we're going to make macroeconomic decisions, then we need to have some of this kind of data. But when I ask these questions in the past, people just roll their eyes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gaitius. I know this is a very broad and critical topic, so I want to make sure we kind of keep a fence around what we're discussing here. I mean, so I have some questions of my own, but first I'm going to ask other commissioners if they have things they would like to ask staff. I guess then I'll ask a question of Kyle. Can you help me understand how this discussion of, you know, of this resolution to decrease housing costs by 5% settled on these three particular topics?
Kyle Kobe with planning. I think we're going to have to defer to Jeff.
On that question, I was not present at the time, with the city of Lawrence at the time that this originated. So I could not give you, I guess, first-person perspective on that, how that developed. I can tell you that the items that you're looking at today are, were very specifically, I guess, put in front of you because these were the ones that were initiated by the City Commission in 2018. So that is why you are seeing these items specifically and not some of the other items that might come before you through other text amendment processes.
Fantastic. Thank you, please, Jeff.
Jeff Craig, Plank and Development Services Director. Kyle was right about that. It was all the way back in February of 2018, which seems almost like a decade ago in recent times, I'd say. But at that point in time, there was an initiation that was presented to the City Commission that had outlined the items that were on the, on for review this evening at that, excuse me, let me try that again. There was a list that was included on that, that was in, on that review, that that's what the initiation was based upon. So it was based on the items presented to the City Commission at that point. Some of the other items that were also on that list were part of the building code update and review processes. So they were in a bit of a different channel, which is a little different than the land development code updating process. Those building codes go through reviews every, at least every three years, if not longer in some instances. But this would be the set that was directly connected to Chapter 20 and the land development code in some respects. So that was, that was how that kind of came to be.
Thank you very much, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. I guess one thing I, before we move on, I'd just like to say, whatever the outcome of this particular item on the agenda, I want to both reassure our public speakers, but also implore the City Commission that this goal of 5% reduction in the cost of housing doesn't go away, that, you know, for us to follow staff's recommendation would not mean to say, okay, well, we've taken a good stab at this, and let's move on. That said, Commissioner Willie, you wanted to say something?
Mr. Chair, I have a similar point, that it's not to say that we can't do it, but that we haven't done it yet in terms of finding those cost savings. And this shouldn't be anyone's idea that this is a finished conversation, whatever we decide tonight, because we have, we have a lot of, we have a large goal to fulfill here of affordable housing, and this is not going to put a large dent in it, whatever we decide, just given the small items that we have before us.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Ashworth.
Sharon Ashworth, Planning Commission. Just to sort of get started on some of these details that we have before us, I do want to say off the bat that I do agree that it's worthwhile to look at cumulative costs. I mean, these might be small items here and there, but whether you're talking about federal budgets, city budgets, these sorts of things, I agree with Ms. Flori in saying the cumulative should not be ignored. Just because each cost seems fairly insignificant does not mean they should be ignored. But now that being said, I, some of these, I certainly agree with staff. And on some of these, I'd like to get into a discussion about the traffic, but I also just a, a point on the street trees. I'm inclined to agree with staff for not reducing the number of street trees, basically because we're also dealing with a climate crisis here. And trees are extremely valuable in terms of carbon sequestration, and certainly added a lot of value to our properties. And I would argue that certainly the value of a tree on a lot, trees on lots increase their value and increase the property value. So it's not just the cost we're looking at. So I have a couple of questions about the street trees. Is one, what is included in that $365 for that? And also, I'd like to ask if anybody considered the cost savings potentially, instead of reducing the number of trees that are planted, the idea of reducing the caliper of the trees from two inches to one and a half inches? So I guess the $365 question goes to the city. And also, if the city has any, was there any input from the horticulture staff about reducing the two-inch caliper to the one and a half caliper, which I think might be an option?
Kyle Kobe with planning. As far as the 365.
Figure goes, that number was taken from the administrative policy that was referenced in the staff report. That document is developed, and my understanding is that it is updated on a fairly regular basis. I do not know what the interval of time is that it gets updated. I know that the current one, I don't have it up in front of me. I actually just lost many of the documents I had up on my device, so I apologize. But I believe that that has been updated in the fairly recent past. I'm sorry. 2015. I'm being informed right now. And I'm sorry, I am blanking on what the other half of the, oh, as far as the caliper of the trees goes, that is something that has come up from time to time. Again, I think the reason why that's not really addressed or discussed in detail through this in the staff report or in much of the attachments that you see is because, again, working within the framework of the text amendment that was initiated by the City Commission in developing the report that you have in front of you, we wanted to keep a, we wanted to keep the discussion focused on the matters that had been initiated. Kind of moving outside of those parameters, we wouldn't really have the ability to go very far with those at this time. Now, that doesn't mean that through another process, those same discussions couldn't occur. But at this time, that's why you don't see a whole lot of discussion about that right now.
Jeff Craig, Plank and Development Services Director. Commissioner Ashworth, I think you also asked, what was the opinion of the forestry manager for the city? Was that correct?
Kyle Kobe with planning. I can say that when initially developing the staff report and kind of looking at all of the different factors involved, the recommendations and a lot of the language was presented to her at that time. It has been looked at, it's been reviewed by her. I don't have specific comments. I didn't get comprehensive feedback. So I, we certainly didn't get into matters such as like the caliper or anything like that, but yeah, I don't really have a whole lot of additional information beyond just that she was a part of the process.
Thank you, Kyle. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie, I think you had a follow-up.
On, we're on the topic of trees. I think the smaller trees that Commissioner Ashworth was suggesting might also have a better survivability. I think one of the issues with the street trees is paying for them the first time, paying to replace them when they die, not having the flexibility of the time of year when they get planted that would affect their survivability. I think, I think that's one of those death by a thousand cuts when you're paying to do something a second time or a third time because of the survivability. And I think that, you know, new homeowners or whoever is inheriting this property that's required to keep those trees alive for whatever length of time, might, might have a better time of, an easier time of it with the smaller caliper, the younger trees might establish better.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Did you want anyone to respond on that?
No, I was just kind of echoing Commissioner Ashworth's discussion about whether that could be a factor that would save some dollars.
Okay. Thank you. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Ashworth.
I'm just, Sharon Ashworth, Planning Commissioner, just, yes, the, from the little bit of research, I did do some scientific papers in the horticulture literature, did indicate that the smaller caliber trees do have a greater survival. I did not look deeply into that, but at least some of the papers do indicate that that is true.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. David Carter, Chair. I guess one thing we might want to entertain, I don't know how much time we're likely to invest in this item, but whether we ought to, whoever makes an eventual motion, would be to, you know, accept or reject the recommendation, or at least to suggest looking into the caliper of the trees. One thing that I'd just like to observe, and it's clear from this item, that a significant amount of time and effort went into preparing this. And I want to, you know, commend staff for investing that time. One thing that I think is a little bit frustrating, I can kind of share Commissioner Gaitius's feelings, is that I can't imagine at any point that people preparing this believed that it would even approach a dent in the 5% figure. And one thing that I would request, and I'm not sure if, you know, I think it might actually be a request directly to the City Commission, in requesting a study, would be that it have the goal of recommending a set of measures that might conceivably actually reduce the housing cost by 5%. Because, I mean, I look at this, and I'm inclined to follow staff's recommendation to the letter.
I mean, the first two items seem to me really defensible from a value standpoint. And the last one, just in terms of practicality, I agree that, you know, it doesn't make much sense to build something, tear it up, and build it again. So I think I would just ask, as a follow-up to the city and county commissions, to take this 5% housing cost reduction figure seriously and commission a study that would actually, you know, attempt to address that figure. I would like to return to the issue of sidewalks, though. And, you know, in monthly meetings over the past several months, we have seen several occasions where we've been asked to grant a variance and not require a builder to build a sidewalk because there was no yet, there was not yet housing to correspond to that. And I think it's eminently sensible. One thing that I would really hope, though, is to reconcile that practicality with the goal of ensuring that every neighborhood have sidewalks on both sides of the street. And so I'm not sure what the exact recommendation, what the policy recommendation would be there, what are the triggers when, you know, you can no longer get by without sidewalks on both sides? For example, that a particular percentage of lots on a block are developed, I would just like to ask that that, that some sort of threshold or some sort of policy be included so that we don't face these endless requests for variances, because there does seem to be some gap between the goal and practice. I don't know, Jeff, any, any response to either of those observations?
Jeff Craig, Plank and Development Services Director. You know, it's, that's a good point, Commissioner. I think that's one that we've seen happen with the Multimodal Transportation Commission in our, some of our other previous joint meetings and in discussions related to Transportation 2040, Safe Routes to Schools, and some of the other documents that revolve around those kind of items there. That's, it is, sometimes it's a hard discussion to have on when that value kicks in on that one. When we looked at the subdivision regulations and when those, when sidewalks are triggered, it's typically when there is development that reaches a certain threshold in there. And the exact threshold is eluding my recall at the moment, but usually there has to be a moment when you do a certain level of development, then that requirement of a sidewalk comes into play. There are some instances that you've seen previously where that has been problematic, either due to, in one instance I can think of was a bridge and a culvert was too narrow to allow for sidewalk on both sides, but it did allow it for on one side. You know, we've had some recent ones come through where it was in, you know, roads that weren't necessarily, they were more for heavy traffic and heavy vehicle usage and not necessarily, you know, maybe conducive to walking in instances. I can also think of some instances where the Planning Commission has not recommend, or excuse me, has not granted the variance for the reasons that we've talked about previously about that, kind of that goal for sidewalk on both sides. So, you know, I think that's something to take a look at, maybe is. you know, I think that's something to take a look at, maybe as at a level above Planning Commission in some ways. I think that's probably a broader community discussion and value that tends to kind of come up, but it does take root a little bit in our subdivision regulations that we have.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Other comments, questions from commissioners? So I see a kind of a conundrum. I mean, again, in terms of the strict item is presented here, you know, we're, we're being asked to make a recommendation one way or the other on these three items. But we've got this much broader issue of housing affordability. And again, just to return to my first comment, I don't want whatever motion we make, whatever resolution we make, to be interpreted as passing judgment on the overall goal of housing affordability. So, I mean, I'm inclined, I'm inclined to accept staff's recommendations, but I would like to hear from other commissioners. Wow. Let's see, Commissioner Struckoff, I think you hit your buzzer first.
I guess I have to agree with Ms. Florrie that it is death-by-a-thousand cuts, you know. We have small, small incremental requirements that that are governed by our stated community values. And to backtrack on those would provide a bit of relief. Some items would provide more relief than others. I tend to agree with the Chair that these three items, as presented by the staff, I can agree with these. I think that the sidewalk thing makes perfect practical sense. And I think the other two are so small that 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 they are not worth backtracking on our community values for. And, but I still want to acknowledge that every little bit that we can do is important. And when I think about the list, the larger list that Mr. Gash has described, you know, that, that's kind of self-evident that there is more we could do. And I think it is imperative to keep that larger affordable housing goal in mind. And I really do share Mr. Gash's frustration when I think about the work that's been done by so many groups in our city and the difficulty in making progress to date. How much RS5 housing have we built in the last 10 years? How many lots have been built with RS5? I noticed there's an example in here using a 2,000-square-foot house in the August letter from last year on an 80-foot frontage. RS5 lot is probably 30% cheaper, I'm sorry, RS7 lot is probably 40% more expensive than RS5 lot, just by the number of, by the number of square feet involved. Are we building much RS5? We're certainly looking at RS5 for affordable housing opportunities. That might be one of the questions we need to look into. We build a lot of RS7. We build a lot of RS7. And we have, we throw in a little few dots of RS5 here and there. And so I agree that these three recommendations by the staff, I agree with all of these. And I can support this as it's written here. And certainly the sidewalk, you know, when I, even though, for me, as somebody who walked to work for 22 years, who really, really appreciates sidewalks on both sides of the streets where I'm walking, and really notices where our sidewalk deserts are, I was resistant to this. But when I think about it practically, having somebody crush my sidewalk when they were doing work on my garage, I thought, you know, we should have done this first, right? We should have built this garage back here. Now, I live in a neighborhood that already had sidewalks in it. And when they drove over with a truck and set a pumping, they went ahead and fixed it. But that is a practical consideration, I think, that I can support here. And it happens to be the one that might make the most difference of these three that we are presented here tonight in this limited view. And so I can support that. And, and I guess I'll just go back to sharing Mr. Gash's frustration that it is such a difficult issue when you deal with a goal and demand and the willingness, you know, the willingness as a community to build houses that are $200,000 houses. How do, how do we do that? Can we do that? You know, we just had, in a previous item tonight, we discussed the cost of building materials. It's getting more and more difficult. And so I think, I think, you know, density and verticality and everything will help, will help address that, but but I believe that we do have to take almost every step we can. Of these three, I can support the sidewalk regulation change. And other than that, I can just say, let's keep working on it. Because, you know, even though we, even though the progress is slow, I believe we are making progress. We're here tonight. We've looked at the work that Ahab has done to date. And in the five to 10 years that we've been trying to raise this issue as a priority, I think we have succeeded in doing that, is raising it as a priority. The taking the steps that are actually going to make the concrete differences, pardon the pun, are the hardest, are the harder parts. And these are certain steps that we'll do. And I would, you know, I would, I would agree with Mr. Gash's that there are more steps that can be taken. They have been presented, and we are given these three tonight. And I think these are evidence of kind of how difficult it is when you have a much longer list. We get down to these and we're, and in my view, of the three that we're presented with, I can go with one of them. We do have the capacity to make these changes. The question is, what's really going to make a difference for us? We have, we make, we're nibbling on the edges. We realize that. I think everybody here can agree that that we are nibbling at edges, even with the most significant one of these, a sidewalk. Let's not break our sidewalk and build it again. That makes perfect sense. And even that, being large, the three we're presented with tonight is a very small nibble on the edge. I'll just leave it at that and say that I can support the staff report and this proposal as it's written.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff. I believe other commissioners may have wanted to say something. Commissioner Sinclair?
I don't have a whole lot to add. I just wanted to observe, or I guess, say that it's an adaptive challenge for sure. And these particular things that are in front of us now are sort of technical solutions to chip away. I'm inclined to support them. I think that they sort of strike a balance with some of the value, the competing values we have. You know, when we approved the comp plan, we had to do a lot of discussion of competing values, and there was a ton of tension in that plan. And this is sort of a function of that. And it's a challenge we're going to have to tackle. But I think for purposes of tonight, I'm okay with what has been presented, and I would support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Ashworth, had you wanted to say as well?
No.
All right. Commissioner Carpenter?
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. I'm inclined to go with staff's proposal with Commissioner Ashworth's recommendation that explores smaller caliber trees. I mean, I I do, I have seen some of that literature about survival rates and agree with that. And that's worth considering. That might cut down a little bit of cost there. This issue, you know, unfortunately, we own three small things in front of us tonight. There are major, large discussions that I'm sure have to come to the community. We have the problem of restrictive covenants that will prohibit accessory dwelling units in large swaths of the city. We have lot sizes that get in the way of doing things. We have the statewide ban on inclusionary zoning to make sure we have affordable housing in new, newly annexed areas to the city. So we have a lot of problems. We have a lot of things getting in the way. And then we add to that the fact that we are a highly desirable area for people to move to from, that are fleeing COVID, that are fleeing environmental changes. They're coming here. They are driving up the prices for the available lots. I don't know that we can build our way out of this. I don't even know how desirable that is, given the other external costs that come with that with city services and how those are paid for. So it is a huge issue, and it's not just, and, but you know, we have three other communities in our county. And our commission is only unincorporated because of the county in this province. We also have in La Compton that are part of solving some of this prop issue for Douglas County as a whole. I think we're going to have to expand our scope a little bit. I mean, we have some county borders that we can't really go over, but I think this affordable housing issue is not just ours. It's everywhere. And we're going to have to expand the boundaries of the conversations. And I don't know what we do about such things as restrictive covenants or prohibiting, I don't even know that we can stop them in a new subdivision if the property owners decide to do it, to say, no ADUs here ever. That's part of what tenants to homeowners is running into with the lot prices, is we, as we go west, we have larger lot sizes, and they can't get the return that they need or the leverage to purchase those properties to make it work. And then they run into these other restrictions that make it impossible. I mean, the city is probably going to, eventually going to have to have this discussion just about our zoning categories. Do we eliminate some of the larger lot sizes completely and go to smaller lot sizes? And where do we put, where do we grow up? You know, do we bulldoze housing that exists that's currently able to go up around this, or do we start some other, you know, core that's going to be high rises? These are huge issues. And we just have such minuscule items in front of us tonight. I don't know what difference we're really going to make here tonight, but I encourage, you know, from the staff presentation that there are ways that the city can waive some of these requirements for the two that are recommended for denial. There's already a process for that to be independently reviewed and a decision made as to whether or not it should apply. So, but I would agree with the sidewalks. That is the most practical and straightforward one that we have. And if we can increase the survivability rate of trees by going with smaller trees, that seems like a little thing that we could do too.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie?
And Willie, Planning Commissioner, I think we need to find something in this that acts as somewhat of an olive branch. We know we're not going to do everything, and, but maybe I think we need to try a little bit harder than just the staff recommendation, to see what we can find here, because it's, because it's been a very long and frustrating process for the people that are working on this problem. The sidewalks have, that's been needed, that has needed to change for so long, and it's been such a frustration for the people that have been, you know, working in that field and building things that they know they have to tear up. And the huge carbon cost of concrete to have to do it twice also seems very irresponsible for us as a community. So 100% in favor of changing that regulation. I think the street trees, I would go in favor of the fewer street trees, because we're not talking about what's, we keep wanting to focus on what's the cost for one lot. Well, we aren't actually, that's not what's solving the problem of having people come and build a single house on a single lot and the cost of that. We need people to come and build 10, 20, 30, 40 houses, 40 lots, and to fulfill some of the need in the housing demand. So the, that's the price we need to be looking at. So they seem like small, inconsequential costs per lot, but these are upfront costs that are paid for by somebody who has the vision to fulfill this housing need in our community. So it's not just that it's $100 a lot. It's the upfront cost. We don't have people that want to build this kind of housing. We need to incentivize that. So that's where these small items come in. And everyone keeps talking about three items, and I see four on our list. The street trees, the traffic impact study, the downstream sanitary sewer analysis, and the sidewalks. So I think, let's take one more stab. Let's see what else we can find here. I think we need to offer some kind of an olive branch.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. I'm just, I guess, when it comes to street trees, I think Commissioner Ashworth has offered the most effective olive branch, which is, and I don't want to ask staff to go back, maybe I do, ask staff to go back and actually cost this out. What's the difference in, you know, per tree and in the two-inch versus one-and-a-half-inch caliper? But if that achieves the same, the same cost savings improves survivability while not reducing the total number of street trees, it's kind of a win, that's a win for everybody. But I guess I would just ask you, Commissioner Willie, to elaborate a little bit on what kind of olive branch you would propose.
And Willie, Planning Commissioner, I think we can probably save more money with the younger trees than we could with the fewer trees. That's just a gut reaction there. So if we can put serious consideration around that, I think it might get the survivability also. And that could be a help. I think we heard a little bit about that staff has the ability to either waive or ask for the cheaper version of the traffic impact study and the fixture count instead of a full downstream sanitary sewer analysis. I think maybe just knowing that it's an option maybe isn't enough. I think maybe we have to kind of know that that option is used to the fullest extent that seems safe in our community. I don't know how we get that in our motion that we make today. But maybe, Jeff, could you address that on those two items, the traffic impact study, the two levels of that, and also the downstream sanitary sewer? Or Kyle?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Service Director. I will try my best, but I might have to lean on David Cronin to maybe chip in here and give actual engineering advice, where I would probably come a little short on that one. But my understanding is usually in the asks that when Municipal Services and Operations is going through those kind of applications and reviews, that usually they do lend toward the side of looking at how to kind of go through those lesser items when possible. Now, they might not be able to do it in every instance, but it's my understanding is they try to use those when they're the most appropriate. And David Cronin, please correct me if I've gone wrong there.
Yeah, Jeff. Dave Cronin, City Engineer from Municipal Services and Operations. That's correct.
We, we don't want to, you know, have unnecessary studies when it's not going to tell us, you know, it's not going to result in any changes. So we try to identify, you know, the, the need to have studies when we, when we look at the size of a development. So on more smaller subdivisions, you know, we, you know, strongly consider waiving traffic studies because, you know, quite frankly, they're not going to have much of an impact on adjacent street network. But for larger, larger subdivision projects, I think it is very important that we, that we conduct those studies to, you know, identify the need to make improvements for infrastructure to accommodate safe mobility of, of access and transportation needs. So, you know, currently the threshold, I think it's, it's 11 units is where we require the, the smaller study. And so I think we do take into account, you know, based off the context of the, the project, really the, the need to have those studies or not. So it's something that we, we do consider, you know, when we see these applications. So I don't have any information on how frequently we, we waive them or not. But I hope that, that helps. We do certainly understand the cost of that. And we don't want to incur unnecessary costs for, for no reason. And, you know, we've, with our discussion on, on the sidewalk repair, have had good conversation with the home builders and recognize those improvements. And so we're, you know, we're well aware of, you know, the value of, of keeping costs down, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Jeff or Kyle, did you want to follow up on, on, on Commissioner Willie's question?
Kyle, with planning, I don't know that I have anything to add beyond what's already been said. I also don't have any, you know, I don't have data for the, you know, X amount of years, how many projects did or did not require what level of study. There's a little bit of that in your staff report that sort of outlines, you know, the, the larger subdivision processes required, you know, something like a traffic impact study, but a lot split or something like that. I know that I have been in meetings where, you know, even if it is several lots, those requirements are identified very early on as, you know, not a requirement. It's very case by case. It is dependent on what the proposed development is and where it's at and things of that nature. So it's kind of tough to get into, I guess, broad level perspective on how often that happens without having gone through all of the applications that have come through over the past, I don't know, decade or so.
Got it. Thank you, Kyle, David Carter, Chair. I'd like to ask Jeff or Kyle, what are our options here this evening? I mean, we've got, as, as Commissioner Willie noted, we've got four items. And we've, you know, the staff recommendation is, is essentially an up or down vote on, on, on these. And I'll, I'll be honest, I'm not inclined to go through and start picking apart the text of each of these. But the, the point is well made in terms of looking for shades of gray within these, within these, these recommendations. I think the, the street tree proposal of, of considering younger trees is a, is a really constructive one. The, you know, the, the traffic study and the downstream sanitary sewer analysis, I can't speak to them. I think Commissioner Willie makes some, some valuable recommendations. But could I ask you to just clarify what our options are at this point?
Be happy to. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. The commission's role this evening is to provide a recommendation to the governing bodies on the item there. And your ability is under land development code is to recommend approval, approve with modifications, or to deny the proposed amendment. So you can make recommendations and can modify them in that context. You also always have the ability to table a discussion or, you know, kind of give staff direction on more information to be sought so that you can make a full and informed decision if you'd like. So you, you kind of have four options available on the table.
Thank you, David Carter, Chair. I'll turn this over to commissioners who might have additional comments at this point. Comments at this point. I'd say there, there are elements that I. One or two may be approved with recommendations. But I, I can't help but return to the original intent of this entire study and express a little bit of personal frustration that we would invest this additional time on something that is not, it doesn't seem to take the problem as seriously as it needs to be taken. I think ultimately my message to my recommendation, request of the city commission would be to go back to this and, and take a bigger bite of the apple. Address this in a more serious manner. Other commissioners? Commissioner Willie.
Chair, if you'd be all right, I'd kind of like to reach back to Ms. Floria and Mr. Geishas and see what thoughts they have on these conversations. I think this, more than most items, is kind of a conversation, a community conversation, and they've been further, longer involved than we have.
Of course, thank you. But I would, I would request that you ask, address one person at a time.
Bobby, Floria, would you start?
Yes, thank you. Um, I really appreciate the conversation. And, you know, it's really hard to listen to it and not want to then chime in about the other side because you're getting a lot of staff input and, but you have our written comment and our testimony, but there, I have some responses that I can't chime in in. But I think of, and I appreciate Commissioner Willie's desire to go further and do more. Same with Commissioner Ashworth, and many of you have said that. But what Commissioner Carter is talking about, I think is really, to me, a higher outcome. And that is sending this to the city commission, going ahead and, and adopting, approving what the text amendment that staff, every, on the parts you all agree on, but sending the message to the city commission that we have to do something more comprehensive, something more that is not just nibbling around the edges. So I really am encouraged to hear that type of comment coming from the planning commission. And again, you know, don't, everything you're talking about, every little thing that you're talking about is appreciated and will make a difference. But I think that the bigger goal is what Commissioner Geishas and what Commissioner Carter are kind of getting that. And that is to, you know, look at the bigger picture and, and ask the city and county commission to, to go further, more, in a more comprehensive approach.
Thank you, Ms. Floria. Commissioner, David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie, would you care to address Mr. Geishas?
I would indeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ron Geishas, Affordable Housing Advisory Board member. I would say I'm greatly encouraged by the discussion I've heard this evening, particularly those of you who have expressed interest in taking a more serious look at some of the broader, more impactful things that might be done to have an impact on the cost of new construction. I, you know, I'm embarrassed that what we've brought you is so modest. But when we began these discussions three and four years ago, people, you know, the institutional inertia in support of the status quo is hard to describe without people taking it personally. But when we began these discussions three and four years ago, and we raised the issues about how do you, what can we do to reduce the cost of new construction by 5%? I was lucky if I got an eye roll from staff. More usually, they simply looked away and then would comment, well, you know, these policies have all been decided. These policies all reflect our community values. This is decided. Well, if it was decided, we did a crappy job of considering how it impacts the cost of new housing. And, you know, this is the first I've heard after four years of discussion that staff thinks that busting up sidewalks isn't an okay thing. There's been institutional resistance to that initiative right up until I saw the staff report for this meeting tonight. So it's not all easy. The stuff you thought were no brainers took us four years to bring to you. So if you're serious about doing something serious, then we need a lot more support. And it's, you know, to me, it's not sufficient when staff says, well, we didn't consider the caliber of trees because that wasn't on the commissioner's list. We talked about caliber of trees in August. We asked, what are the savings for changing caliber of trees? We asked, we asked, does the ADA require sidewalks on both sides of the street? We never got any responses back to those questions. So I'm ready to have those conversations when the community is. And that's got to start with the institution. The institution has been a weight that we've drug along behind us, Bobby and I. And we've had countless, countless conversations with Diane Stotter and our city manager, two city managers, our chamber executive, you know, the housing lots inventory discussion's been going on two years. We're nowhere. We can't even agree on how many open lots we have. So there is a lot that has to be overcome if you want to generate real impact on this issue. And we all, all of us need to ask, what can we do more? Because after four years of leaning in, we've got this pitiful little list that we all agree won't have much impact. And, you know, I think the sidewalk stuff is a no brainer. Why staff didn't just start granting waivers left and right three years ago? I don't know. Why didn't they self initiate a policy change? I don't know. We've got to do more. We're not doing much. And if we're impacted, it's going to require those more impactful suggestions that several of you have given some voice to.
Thank you, Mr. Geishas. Commissioner Willie, do you have any follow up questions?
No follow up questions. I think one of the kind of take home messages I, I get from hearing the additional commentary is that maybe as, is that maybe as we, whatever recommendation we make tonight, that we also ask the city to consider setting a residential lot inventory goal with the, with an eye towards affordable housing, as well as to consider this as an initiation, a reinitiation of that 5% discussion, trying to decrease costs by 5%. That this may be the first step of it, but that we, we go back and look again. And that was kind of my thought when we first heard that, that, that we couldn't get anywhere close to that 5% is we just haven't done it yet. We just have to keep looking. There are other ways. So I think, I think we do have a role as a planning commission. And land use is what we talk about. And land use is kind of the, the heart of, of, of the issue that we have here with affordable housing in terms of lot availability and opening lots for, for development and, and including the, the density. I think we just need to send a message that we want to be a part of this discussion in a positive way.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Other observations, questions from commissioners? I, I guess I would just ask, we still have one item on our agenda. And so I think the constructive message that we send ideally would be one that we start sending fairly soon. I, I'll be honest, it's not clear to me where lies. I mean, again, I'm going to return to my earlier comment. I'm inclined to, if, I'm inclined to. I'm to more or less follow the, the, the staff recommendations on these particular items because I think presented without our going in and beginning to pick them apart. The impact, what is it? The, the, the. The impact and, and, and cost trade off is, is, is well researched and well presented. But I, I would, you know, we've got a different city commission than we had in 2018. And I would like to ask that the city commission revisit this question and ask if this is something they seriously still want to pursue. Because if they do, then they need to take another stab at it. Would any other commissioners care to speak? Commissioner Ashworth.
Sure, Ashworth. Planning Commissioner, I'll just say I agree. And we can move forward from there.
Thank you. Is anyone in a position to make a motion? Or do we need further discussion? I'd prefer not to make a motion. Commissioner Carpenter looks very circumspect. I'm going to ask that he tell us what's on his mind.
Not much, just that this is so big. And the fact that, that the commission changes every two years makes it really difficult to continue with progress because every time we rotate possibly three people on or off, we change perspectives on everything. So it's, it's a tough, tough thing all around. I mean, I, we have to address this issue, but some of the things we have to do are large scale. And we all have seen how long it takes to get anything done. How, how many years it took for the comprehensive plan? And that was actually a record. And we have so many things that we have to revisit and the pressure on our limited staff. I, I don't know how they keep up with what they have, much less make progress on the long waiting list. So, yeah, I, I'm not, I don't even know what kind of motion to make here. I, I share the thoughts of everyone else that we are barely scratching a big problem. And it's very frustrating. Our role is so limited in what we do in just reviewing things that actually get onto our agenda. We're not actively involved. I'm not even sure when we have our next joint meeting with, with the Affordable Housing Board. But I know we were going to try at one time pre-COVID to try to do that at least once a year. And that's probably not even enough because we have to be weighing in on some of these larger, community wide, regional wide issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. David Carter, Chair, I guess on that one last point, I think there is a, an answer. Jeff, could you confirm our, our, or can you, I'm not sure if it's confirmed, but if you can confirm our, our next scheduled meeting or next planned meeting with AHEB?
Certainly, Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. We're, as many of you know, I also sit as staff to the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. So we're. So we're working right now to find a joint meeting in April where both bodies can get together and discuss this topic at a, at a joint session. We're going to be kind of going that to, excuse me, we're going to be taking that date to Ahab to make sure it works for them very soon, I hope. But we're looking at a potential April meeting at the moment.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. I, I guess, I'm, I'm really hoping city commissioners are, are following this discussion. Because nothing that comes out of the, the minutes are going to adequately reflect, I think, the feelings that we all have about this issue. And I, I want to make clear, I don't think, you know, from the standpoint of affordability, housing affordability, I think, yeah, I mean, it's obviously bigger than just construction costs, right? But it's, it's one component. I'm not sure, really, I, I'm even convinced that overall reduction of construction costs are going to benefit, you know, housing affordability for consumers. So I, I think one thing I'd like to just ask city commission to, to commit to is, you know, a, a broader initiative, whether that involves, you know, another, more public involvement, more, more muscle behind Ahab, some way or another, it's a more serious discussion that needs to be had. With that, I would seriously entertain a motion to address the item before us. Commissioner Willie? Commissioner Willie?
I will try. I move that we make a recommendation in favor of the staff's recommendation for text amendment 20 dash two with regards to sidewalk code. And with the addendum that we ask, ask the staff to consider a smaller caliper of trees, street trees within the, the current regulation of one per 40 feet and to give full consideration for flexibility on traffic impact studies and downstream sanitary sewer analysis when feasible. Did I get close?
That, that certainly addresses everything, I think. Does anyone, oh, Commissioner, sorry, David Carter, Chair, Commissioner Shanklin, is that a comment or a second?
Commissioner Shanklin here. It is a comment. I'm wondering if we can add to that. I, I like the existing motion that's on the floor, but would like to consider adding to that in addition to looking into smaller caliper trees, that we also look into an evaluation of when and where we can provide only one sidewalk or sidewalk on one side of the street. And further, is there a way to urge the city commission to look into both whether the cost reduction is the right measure of success or if there's a different number that we should be looking at, as well as if there are other measures of success, for example, simply the production of new units of particular kinds.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Ashworth, I think we may either have an amendment to the motion or we might, I don't know if we want to strike it and start over or just consider this discussion. Commissioner Ashworth?
Commissioner Ashworth, just, I'm not sure I understood what Commissioner Shanklin wanted to add at the last, right there, the last comment he was making. But I, I, at this point, would not agree with any, with one sidewalk on one side of the street. I would not agree with adding that to a motion. And I'm, like I said, I'm not quite sure where he was getting at the very end there, what, what was, what was trying to be added to the motion, if there was something in those last comments.
Commissioner Shanklin, care to respond?
I'd like to attempt to clarify both of those points. Commissioner Shanklin, I, as to the sidewalks, I, I'm looking for an evaluation because we know from recent cases that have come before us, we don't think that we always need to sidewalk on both sides of the street. We waive that requirement and I think that our subdivision regulations take the easy way out by requiring both sides when the harder task is to do the connect the dot evaluation and solve for the number of pedestrian traffic counts and street crossings that provide a satisfactory pedestrian experience. So that's, that's what I would want to look at because I think it can reduce the cost of construction. For the latter point, it was simply a hope that we could urge the city commission to, to broaden their scope of review so that we don't just get stuck with trying to reduce the cost of housing by 5%.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin. We can hear you. Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin. David Carter, Chair, looks like Commissioner Payton would like to speak.
Excuse me for late chime in here and excuse the construction noise that you might hear. I just wanted to chime in on the sidewalks. I think that is such a broad discussion and after serving on the bicycle pedestrian task force and after going through, you know, multiple transports, I just think that that, that is such a big issue and I think we've struggled so much with sidewalk issues in this town that haven't been fixed yet, that that may be a completely different discussion and I don't think we want it, or at least I certainly don't want to touch it in this particular context right now without significant community input.
Thank you, Commissioner Payton. David Carter, Chair, I would agree with Commissioner Ashworth and Commissioner Payton. I think that's a, a really big discussion. I think, you know, the point I was trying to make earlier, and I, in my opinion, Jeff addressed it. I was concerned about the, you know, the threshold that needed to be reached at which a, a sidewalk ultimately does need to be constructed. I'm, I'm frankly not interested in supporting a motion that would look at allowing sidewalks to be only on one side of the street as a permanent state. But Commissioner Shanklin, was there? We consider maybe letting Commissioner Willie's motion stand?
No, was gone.
Thank you, David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie?
I care, Willie, Planning Commissioner. So I had the original motion and I'd like to say I would, I would not be in favor of, of adding the sidewalk on one side of the street discussion at this point, just based on times when we've discussed that in the past and think that that's a bigger, broader issue than we can cover right now. But I would, I would be willing to add a, a statement if, if it's appropriate to put on the motion, just asking the city commission to reinstate a look at reducing the costs of new construction beyond these items.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Struckoff, you raised your hand. I'm not sure if you wanted to second or make a comment.
I actually did want to make a comment. I don't think I actually actively raised my hand, but thank you for, I mean, Commissioner. And I think that we have had some other suggestions as Mr. Geishis has indicated. We can certainly return to some of those, but I think whether it's through that mechanism or perhaps in our capacity as a planning commission to meet with them more often, as Commissioner Carpenter has suggested. To me, I guess, I'm, what I'm saying is that I, I need, I would like us to have a way to honor the work that has gone on so far in this effort and to not just, to not just sustain it, but to improve it and increase, increase our, our drive in that, in that direction and our resolve. I will support the motion as, as stated.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff. So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Commissioner Sinclair, thank you. Any further discussion before we go to a vote? Commissioner Ashworth?
I'm sorry, but can we have a reiteration of that motion, please?
Do your best, Commissioner Willie.
Planning Commissioner, did somebody else write this down as I was going?
Jenny, would you help? Yeah, Jenny, would you care to, or are you able to restate the motion as described by Commissioner Willie?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. I'd be happy to give it a try. Please correct me if I haven't quite captured it in the right spirit here, but I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Willie to recommend approval of text amendment 20 dash 00002 with notes that, or excuse me, with the conditions noted, it's sidewalk code and addendum stat, for staff to consider smaller calipers of trees within the 40 foot planting span, to encourage flexibility on the downstream sanitary sewer analysis and the seven step traffic study when feasible, and to request a reinit, I'm sorry, I spelled that word completely wrong there, re reviewing the costs of new construction, again, beyond the terms in the spirit of the 5% study and to and that, yes, that was it. I'm sorry, the rest of that I misspelled horribly and is not even related. So my apologies there.
Commissioner, thank you. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie, is that an adequate reflection of what you, of the motion you intended to make?
Aaron Willie, Planning Commissioner, that is exactly the motion I made.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. Let's see. Commissioner Ashworth, are you satisfied with that motion, with that as presented or do you have further questions?
I think so. I think the only part I hesitated with was this increased flexibility with the traffic studies. It sounds like the staff is doing that to the extent, I don't know if this gives sort of permission to give more flexibility than I might be comfortable with. I don't know. That seems very undefined to me.
Thank you. David Carter, Chair, other, other discussion before we go to a vote? All right, Jeff, can I ask you to read the roll, please?
Certainly, Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Easy peasy. Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair, thank you very much to public speakers. Really appreciate your input and the work that you've invested in this process. That brings us to our final item of the evening and none too soon. Let's see, item five, consider approving a comprehensive plan amendment to Plan 2040, Chapter 8B, specific land use plans for K-10 and Farmers Turnpike. And Mary is presenting on this.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners, Mary Miller, City County Planner. And this item was before you previously, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment proposing revisions to the K-10 and Farmers Turnpike Plan was initiated by the Board of County Commissioners on May 6, 2020. On July 22nd, the Planning Commission voted to deny the amendment and noted concerns with the timing and the need to revise all area plans to ensure compliance with the newly adopted Plan 2040. The Board of County Commissioners voted to approve the amendment at their September 30th meeting and the amendment is back before the Planning Commission tonight. And as noted in the staff memo provided in the packet, there has been confusion with the process for a comprehensive plan amendment. The state statute outlines the process for approving an amendment and Plan 2040 notes that all amendments must be considered and approved by the Lawrence Douglas County Planning Commission, Lawrence City Commission, and the Board of County Commissioners. Therefore, this amendment moved on to the County Commission for their consideration. As noted in the memo, it's been determined that a comprehensive plan amendment is dead if it is denied by any one of the commissions. This process is laid out in the memo and is the process that will be followed in the future. However, as this amendment was submitted and in process prior to this determination, it's allowed to continue. And I'll provide a brief summary of the amendment as there are some commissioners, I think, that may have not been on the board and this was considered earlier, but there are details in the staff report. This amendment is requesting a revision to the land use recommendations for the area in the northwest corner, the intersection of North 1800 Road or Farmers Turnpike and East 1200 Road. It's on the east side of the stream. It's approximately 29 acres. The applicant had first submitted a conditional use permit application for mini storage, vote, and RV storage facility, which was compliant with the land use recommendations in the long range plan, but this was denied by the County Commission. They noted concerns with the impact of the development on the flood plain and indicated they felt residential development would be more suitable for this area. The applicant then submitted a certificate of survey for residential development. This was administratively denied due to nonconformance with the future land use recommendations in the long range plan and the applicant appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. The commission indicated support for the residential use, but noted they could not uphold the appeal as the planning director did not err when making his administrative decision to deny. The commission deferred action on the certificate of survey and initiated the amendment to revise the long range plan so that residential uses would be possible in this location. And the minutes from that meeting are in the agenda packet. The amendment proposes revising the future land use recommendation from office research to residential office for this portion of the area. And this change is outlined in the staff report in more detail and in the draft amendment language. If the commission votes to approve the amendment, a separate vote would be required on the resolution for the amendment. And this concludes my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. David Carter, Chair. I don't know if there's any public to speak, but I'll give you the option to raise your hand and I'll ask Kyle to confirm if there's anyone in the council chambers, the commission chambers to, to speak.
Kyle Kobe with Planning. I can confirm there's no one in the room with us to speak on this item and I do not see any hands being digitally raised in the Zoom meeting.
Very good. Thank you. David Carter, Chair, I'll turn this back over to the commission for questions or comments towards staff.
Commissioner Shanklin, I, I'm trying to understand our instructions here. Given that this was precisely the same motion that was raised on Jan, or July 22nd, are we to consider the whole thing de novo? Or is it simply a determination that there has been some change in fact or law that would compel us to, to make a different decision on this? And because then my question would be, what has changed?
Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin. I think that's for Mary, right? Or Jeff?
Yeah. Mary Miller, City County Planner. The County Commission will return this back to you for your reconsideration. So there is nothing new. It is the same application. It's the same request. And so then it's just, your action would be to reconsider it based on what information the County Commission provided in their minutes of their meeting and make a determination then, and you could vote to approve it or to deny it.
Thank you, Mary. Commissioner Sinclair?
I went and watched the County Commission's meeting and was sort of surprised by how abbreviated the conversation was about this. I mean, relatively speaking, because we talked about it for a while. I think Commissioner Thelman described our conversation as being torturous. What'd she say? Something along those lines, you know, it's just like took us forever or something. We eventually got to where we got. But what I took away from it was they sent it back. I mean, they voted two to one to approve it. And my impressions were that Commissioner DeRusso was basically of the opinion that they shouldn't have initiated this amendment if they weren't going to approve it. And Commissioner Kelly was of the opinion that the applicant has been through the wringer on this thing, and so we should do what we can to to make it work despite the concerns that that this Commission, that the Planning Commission had last time about doing sort of a one-off when we haven't considered the whole sector plan. And then Commissioner Thelman agreed with the Planning Commission. And so my take is it comes back to us with not a whole lot of direction. I mean, I think we've we considered the things that Commissioner Kelly raised, and I don't I honestly, when I went back and watched that meeting was just thought, I don't know what really we can talk about other than taking a poll to see if anyone's opinion has changed since we discussed it last, and maybe consider any I can't recall if I think Commissioner Shanklin, you joined after this to see if you had any thoughts on it. But I'm sort of, I don't I don't really know. I don't know that my opinion has changed nation to be able to to revise it in any way. That's just my thought for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. David Carter, Chair, other observations? Commissioner Carpenter?
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. Commissioner Sinclair's synopsis is, what I remember seeing, other than the confusion about whether it should have even been at the County Commission, Commissioner Thelman brought that up. It was her understanding that when we voted to deny, it was done. And there was confusion in the discussion as to whether they could consider it and vote on it. And as Commissioner Sinclair pointed out, it was a vote of two to one, and it's come back to us in the same status it was when we considered it the last time. And my position's not changed. I I still stand that we need to look at the area plans as a whole and not carve out individual pieces of it. I'm also wondering whether the neighbors even know this came back to us, if notice went out to them, because we've always had several people speaking about this item, because this isn't the first time we've talked about this piece of land. And every time we've had the same people come to give us comments, and nobody's here this time. So I'm wondering about that, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Did you want to ask, do you want to address that last question to Mary or Jeff?
To Mary, just what notice goes out with this type of item.
Oh, you're on mute, Mary.
Mary Miller, City County Planner. I mailed notice of the original Planning Commission meeting to the property owners within the comprehensive plan amendment. We are required to mail notice to the townships, and that notice was mailed out. The I just notified all the property owners of the original Planning Commission meeting, and then mailed notice out for the County Commission meeting. And at that meeting, they were there, and they heard that it was being returned back to the Planning Commission. And so I contacted the the one property owner that asked me to keep in touch with them by email at this meeting, and I did not mail out additional notices.
Thank you, Mary. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any follow-up questions or observations?
No.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Willie?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. So I've followed this item every time we had it and followed it to the County Commission, and then, of course, back to us, County Commission again, and met with the landowner, and and certainly share the heartache of why the process hasn't worked well on this piece of property. Piece of property. That doesn't especially change my mind. Out what I think may be the right way forward for this, and I shared that with the landowner when I met with him also, that I think rural residential is probably the poorest use for this property that that it could have. Either it should be, you know, held for future city residential, or it should be held for what it was stated in the plan, which is the 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 office industrial, commercial industrial. Until we look at the plan, I think it's hard for us to to say that we don't need that. I think it's possible we don't. I tried to initiate conversations with Chamber of Commerce to say, is this still something that, you know, we're holding out for? I don't get much interest there, so at least it's not something that they're passionate about holding on to. We certainly don't hear from them in our meetings. The only thing I could think of that would maybe justify us having a full conversation about this again would be if it went to the city first, and if they had a strong opinion about it. Because really, I think what we were doing as a planning commission was trying to kind of speak into the vacuum of what we're not hearing from the city because it's a county item. And a lot of time, I think that's what the planning commission does, is we try and bridge the gap between two bodies that that may not otherwise see items that affect each other. So procedurally, I think it's strange that it went from us to the County Commission when we denied it. Strange that it came back to us from the County Commission in that order. But maybe if it's if Jeff, if there's a way that this goes to this, if we table it until we hear back from the city, that might be a potential way forward for this. Can you address that?
Jeff Craig, Planning and Development Services Director. If the Planning Commission was to table it, then it would stay with the Planning Commission. It wouldn't necessarily advance through the channels and go onward on that that item. I should note, the having it go to the County Commission after the Planning Commission was a was a procedural error on our part. We got the process a little bit wrong because it was initiated by the County Commission. So we cut that a little bit out of step in that sense. But Mary wrote a very good memo that some kind of summarizes the real, excuse me, summarizes the real aspects of those process steps on it. So if the Planning Commission was to table, it would it would stay with the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner Willie, any follow-up questions or observations?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. Just to let it, yeah, we we do owe this property owner a direction forward with what he can do with the property, or or if he sells it, what future owners can do with this property, because we've left it in absolute limbo, and that's, you know, a failure on on all of our heads, I think, to 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 let let it stay that way. So he came originally with something that fit the comprehensive plan and was denied. He brought something forward that didn't fit the comprehensive plan but fit what the County Commission suggested for it and was denied. We need to give him a way forward. I'm open to suggestions.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. I will ask Commissioner Shanklin to speak up.
Commissioner Shanklin, I I'd like to hold that thought for a second about what he can do with the property in the future. And just take note of an observation that they give rise to a question for Mary Miller. I went back and watched the videos, both of the July 22 and the September 30 meetings, and I did the best due diligence I could on this to try to find a mention of what the importance of this was in the agricultural land. And the only mention that that I could find was a comment that Commissioner Thelman had made in the September 30 County Commission meeting, that one tag land is lost, it's lost. But is is there some reason that this escaped scrutiny on the basis of, you know, the preservation of agricultural land? And if it's just timing, then can can we find some way of doing that? And then, of course, it's also possible that I just missed the reference in my due diligence.
Mary Miller, City County Planning. And you're right, it was a matter of timing. This applications they were submitted before the zoning regulations were adopted in 2020. And with those regulations, we added the criteria that review the productivity of the property as agricultural land. So it was discussed by the Commission to some degree and by the neighbors that came to speak on the item. They were primarily concerned with losing their terraces, though, and having the drainage moving into the creek to the west and maybe flooding the properties in the area. The floodplain was a primary concern. So we did not analyze the agricultural productivity because there's no rezoning being involved.
Thank you, Mary. Commissioner Shanklin?
Then, Commissioner Shanklin, I'm sorry. This does then lead back to Commissioner Willie's question about what he can do with the property in the future. I I'm concerned that given that this property is unlike, it's tier three, it's unlikely to be annexed during the the term of the 2040 plan, why would we not want to preserve this as agricultural land for that period? It is A1 property. It is, it shouldn't, as Commissioner Willie mentioned, rural residential is probably the worst use for the land, and it doesn't take into contemplation at all what might occur on that property, you know, 19 years from now.
I'm sorry, Mary Miller, City County Planner. With your review of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, you can take into account whether you want to preserve the agricultural land and maintain the research office use category, and that gives an indication to the applicant that any any request for development, a conditional use permit, or other requests may be unlikely to succeed as the agricultural value of the land is, you know, being considered. You know, in your review of the comprehensive plan amendment, and then if they submit a conditional use permit for whatever uses are allowed in the Ag One District, they would know in advance that there may be an uphill struggle, which I think they've known that from their past CUP.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin. David Carter, Chair, other questions, observations? Commissioner Carpenter?
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. I just point out for Commissioner Shanklin's benefit that there was a prior discussion where there was a request to use the current potential zoning category in that area plan to put in boat storage. We had a long discussion about the agricultural land during that particular item when it was before us, and it essentially came down to a split vote on whether to go forward, whether to allow the boat storage or to keep it as agricultural land until we were able to visit this as an entire area plan. So because we had a five-five vote, it stopped with us, and it didn't go on. There was no recommendation to approve. So that and well, it did go to the County Commission with no recommendation, and they voted against boat storage. So essentially, it seems that we ended up with a consensus that the value of this as agricultural land was precedent. We didn't have that much of a discussion when it came back this last time, because this was a different item, and it was it was more about, are we going to amend the comprehensive plan for one property owner or wait until we do the entire area? But we did have that conversation about this as agricultural land before.
The first time around. Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie?
Mary, could you cover for us what would be allowed under residential office in this context for comprehensive plan amendment? Because that's what the suggestion is.
Well, residences would be allowed and, you know, various types of offices. I'd have to pull up the staff report just for a moment.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry. Mary Miller, City County Planner. The recommendation would allow residential development, it would also allow office or live work. So you could have, you know, the residences where a person lives there and also conducts a business of some sort. So it's pretty much just a light mixed use between residences and offices. And some of the live work uses, whatever the base district is, and that would only be when it gets annexed to the city. And so if it's zoned RS or RM, the kind of work portion of that live work would just be whatever's allowed in that district. So it would primarily be home occupations, but a little bit more intensive than would be otherwise allowed.
Yes, please. Commissioner Willie?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. To follow up with that, the 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 county zoning, because it's still a county property, doesn't have a lot of that kind, it doesn't have a lot of office, like you said, it just has kind of the home occupations. So rural residential is kind of the only thing that falls in that category until it's annexed. Would that be correct?
Yes, or any other use that's allowed in the Ag One zoning district, because the zoning would stay the same. So most of the uses in the Ag One district that aren't residential, you know, would require a conditional use permit. And there's a few uses that are allowed. Then you have to go through the conditional use permit process.
Thank you, Mary. Commissioner Willie, please.
Sorry, one last follow-up. Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. So the the proposal that kind of came that prompted the the this coming, this item coming back to us the last time was for five residences on that property. Is that still what would be allowed? And does that fall into the old code or the new code? Would that still be allowed with this comprehensive plan amendment? Is that still on the table?
Well, the certificate of survey is tabled. So what would be allowed on the certificate of survey, they showed five lots and or five RDPs, and that was what they were proposing. We did not review it completely, as we couldn't approve it. And so there's a very good likelihood only four would be possible. You know, once we review it and look at the amount of floodplain, you have to have the three acres outside of the floodplain. So there's no guarantee what was on that plan. It was more of a concept plan at this point, and it's likely that four would be the maximum they could get. But that was what, if it went through, then they probably would be able to get four. And perhaps five. I'm just not saying five would be guaranteed.
Thank you, Mary. David Carter, Chair. Other questions? Observations? Yeah, I my position on this hasn't changed since since the last vote. I mean, just I I'm inclined to deny this 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 amendment. And that would give the property owner some certainty. But I'm interested in hearing other people's, other other Commissioners' perspectives at this point. I would say our obligation to the property balanced with our opportunity to the community to uphold the the principle of a long-term plan. Commissioner Willie?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. We don't have a county attorney on the line, and this We don't have a county attorney on the line, and this is well out of my wheelhouse, but at what point does it constitute a taking? You know, we hear a lot about this and that will affect property values. I think this possibly actually has, that a proposal that fit with the comprehensive plan was denied, a proposal that didn't fit with the comprehensive plan was denied, and the change for the comprehensive plan was denied. I think without a clear direction, I worry if that gets us into tricky ground.
I'll try to take a stab at that. Mary Miller, City/County Planner. And, you know, the commission considers other things, so it wasn't just the compliance with the comprehensive plan. When the CUP went through, that did comply, but they were concerned about the impact on the flooding, and so that was something they took into account. And also, I believe they thought it was preliminary, premature, I think is the word, that maybe it would be more appropriate later, but that it just didn't fit with the character of the neighborhood. And so they didn't just take into account the comprehensive plan at that time. They looked into the merits of the CUP itself, and I don't think they would approve any CUP that included a lot of in previous surface, such as the many storage buildings and the pavement for the boats. And the drainage district provided comments, and they were very worried about the drainage to the stream. So, you know, it's not that it's all hinging on the comprehensive plan. I think trying to do the residential use does hinge on it, and we notified, or told the applicant when he submitted, that it might be a challenge, you know, there's no guarantee you're going to get your comprehensive plan amendment. And Jeff may have more to add to that.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Comprehensive plan amendments are legislative by nature, so they're not necessarily in the same line as what you would typically see as a rezoning, or, excuse me, kind of those items like that. So, you know, the golden factors don't apply to a comprehensive plan amendment, so it goes into a very legislative role for you in that instance. And that's why the city commission, county commission, and the planning commission are weighted the same during the comprehensive plan amendment process. So it's really, it's a policy item that you're looking at less than, you know, something that would have that ramification of a site plan or rezoning effect to it. The thing that I would mention, though, is, you know, it's, when you look at something as far as a rezoning, and we have the golden criteria, or the conditional use permit, and you have the factors that are enshrined in the code, you know, the legislative aspect, that kind of longer view that we've kind of talked about is really the heart of the review of a comprehensive plan amendment. You have the seven criteria that are listed in the comprehensive plan itself for the review, but it's really, it's that broader, longer perspective that is, you know, usually being asked in the instance there. So it doesn't quite meet the same rise in level of rezoning or plating document necessarily in the same instance for the commission.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie.
Mary, can you run through, not counting the comprehensive plan amendment, just with the agricultural zoning and the number of acres, what are his options for what can happen there? Because now we have, we have cluster preservation, which might get him to the five lots without even this change we're talking about. Can you address that? Can you address that?
What being with the current zoning? Without doing a CUP? Yeah. Well, one thing he can do is he can build one residence on it, and he could also have an accessory dwelling in it, those are allowed. He could do agaturism activities, and if they were intense, it would require a CUP. I'm just going to look at my permitted use table. So, of course, he could do agriculture. He could do ancillary agricultural retail sales up to a certain amount. I think it's pretty small, 500 square feet. After that, he would need a conditional use permit. He could do a value-added agricultural business if he raised the commodities on site. He could have a group home limited, and home occupations type 1 or 2 would be permitted in that dwelling. And almost everything else in the district takes a, he could do a small research facility if it's ag-related, minor utilities, special events. And those are the uses that he could do without a conditional use permit. Thank you.
David Carter, Chair. Other commissioners wish to speak up? Commissioner Sinclair.
I've mentioned it before, sorry, Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner, but I'm sort of in the same spot I was last year when we looked at this.
Thank you. Commissioner Ashworth? Did I see you wanted to say something? Okay. Well, I think for the most part, commissioners have spoken up on their points of view, but I don't know that we have a direction. Commissioner Willie. I would like, after, you have spoken up seemingly on both sides of this issue, and I appreciate your comprehensive view of the issue. I'm curious where, you know, where you're trending at this point.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. I thought maybe I'd said enough for a while, I was going to let somebody else have a turn.
Well, no one else seems eager to speak up. So I'm just going to, I guess I'm specifically interested in, you know, you raised the point of view about, you know, low-density housing as being perhaps the worst use for this, for this property under the circumstances. You know, you've raised your concern about the obligation to the property owner. Curious, where does that leave you?
This is the north end of Castle. It's paved roads, farmer's turnpike, paved road through, you know, industrial to the east immediately, and with some residential also. There's some additional industrial to the west, and then the exchange with K-10. I think it's, this is an area that has potential to serve our community in a larger way. Rural residential, you know, I said houses are the last crop. You won't get anything else in that intersection. I think the argument I made last time, which I think I just can't seem to get any past that, which is kind of like what Commissioner Sinclair said, that if we lose this part of the intersection to rural residential, I think we lose the whole intersection for any potential thing that would be more intense than that. To the northeast, since we saw this last, we've had that property change hands and go to be part of the energy, Westar, it's not Westar, Evergy Energy Plant. I just think maybe we have to have a bigger discussion about what we want for that part of town. I still have a hard time just pulling this out and giving up on it, which I feel is what would happen with the comprehensive plan amendment. And even though I feel for the landowner, I just don't feel like I'm in a different position than I was the first time.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Appreciate your, you're putting it, kind of, putting it in a nutshell. David Carter, Chair. I don't know, I mean, Commissioner Shanklin is the only member of the commission who was not part of this body when this came up before, and I don't get the impression that anyone's position has changed, but if anyone's has, I'd be interested in hearing about it. Otherwise, I'd be really interested in someone perhaps making a motion. I think, yeah. Has anyone, does anyone have any new perspective to bring to this that they didn't have when we addressed this several months ago? If not, would anyone care to make a motion on this item? I'm going to call on Commissioner Carpenter again, because I just see you shifting uncomfortably in your chair, and I just feel like you've got something to say.
I've been sitting in this chair almost all day.
I guess we're all kind of uncomfortable in our chairs at this point.
Anyway, I'll just go ahead and make a motion, and I would move that we deny the comprehensive plan amendment CPA 20-00196 to Plan 2040 for the reasons elaborated in the staff report in our discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. David Carter, Chair. Do I have a second? Commissioner Shanklin. Any further discussion before we go to a vote? Commissioner Willie.
It really ought to be done by now. Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. I do just want to kind of state the irony that what we'll get for the moment will be, which I think is fine for now, would be the least intense use, would be agriculture and the one residence or so that's there. But the intention is that I think we want to hold this property out for something that is more intense in the future, whatever that might be. So I hope that that maybe gives the landowner some hope that what we really want to see there will probably be of value to the landowner and the community both. It just might not happen very quickly.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Any further discussion? All right. Jeff, can I ask you to read the roll, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. That brings us to miscellaneous business. Oh, sorry, David Carter, Chair. Upcoming calendar of events. Jeff, would you care to take this on for us, please?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. I'll actually turn it over to Becky Pepper to get to one of those items.
Forgive me, I should have, I should have thought of that. Forgive me. Becky, please.
Becky Pepper, Planning Manager. I will make this brief. We just wanted to give you an update on our upcoming planning commission orientation. That date has been finalized. It'll be Friday, February 26th, and it'll be an abbreviated session. It's not going to be an all-day event like we've done in years past, mainly because we're going to be holding that via Zoom. So it'll be from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and tomorrow I'll be sending out the registration link for that orientation Zoom. So it'll be like the planning commission, where you will need to register for that in order to get that Zoom link. We're working on finalizing the agenda details, but to give you kind of a sneak preview, we're planning, because it's three hours, there'll basically be about three sessions. And we'll have Randy there to give you his update on the legal issues. That will include an update on the bylaws, coma, conflict of interest. We'll also have a session just for your planning commissioners to have a weighted discussion on a planning topic. And then we're also planning on having a joint session with city commissioners and the board of county commissioners. So that is that, unless anybody has any questions about that.
I don't see any questions being raised at this point. David Carter, Chair. Becky, thank you very much for the summary. As we have no other active items on the agenda at this point, I would accept a motion for adjournment. Commissioner Struckoff, thank you. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ashworth? Jeff, can I ask you to read the roll, please?
Yes. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all, and have a good night, and we'll see you next month.